As being come to order today is Wednesday, May 24th, 2017. This is a council budget workshop for the Prescott City Council. And welcome everybody that was able to make it in today and listen to what we're going to be talking about, especially Lars. Appreciate you being here, too.
[laughter]
Roll call, please.
Mayor Ober.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
And we'll have the Mayor Pro Tem leave us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and justice for all.
Now, before I turn it over to the city manager, I think I'll just go ahead and talk very briefly, do an opening statement here. And I've had a chance to look through this budget material. And I think one of my concerns is, you know, we're going to be going to the public in August asking for a .75% increase in TPT. So I think we have to be cognizant of that and understand that if that doesn't pass, we have to be able to look at our budget here and see if there's ways that we might be able to move forward with a Plan B. So I think it's very important for us to look very closely at this today. And I think there's, we need to think out of the box a little bit, maybe even look at areas where, you know, maybe we can contract out, or we can get volunteer support to help with some of the duties of the city. So I just ask everybody to keep that in mind and remember that this morning as we go through this. With that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mayor, to echo your comments, this is a working document, and we've presented what we think is a fair and reasonable document, but it needs your input, and we want your input. If you have ideas or concepts we should explore, or things that we need to do to meet the priorities of this community, and more specifically, the priorities of this elected body, we're going to do that. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark for the first four slides. How many are you doing before I'm done?
As many as I need to.
Okay.
Now, before we move on, I got one comment from the Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, Michael, at one time, there was a citizens advisory committee with regards to necessary things that the city needed, rather than just all the wants. And it has been brought to my attention that maybe it's time to reinstate that particular committee to look at such things for providing services with different models. And I would bring that to your attention, that that's not a bad idea, especially if 443 does not pass. We still going to deliver services, just which services and how. And the citizens have a right, it's their money, it's their city, and they have a right to have input as to what they think is more priority than not.
I agree with you, Mayor Pro Tem. In fact, I think that citizens committees, under the right scenario, make a lot of sense, and we should consider that going forward.
Well, great. Lot of good comments today, and definitely, as you said, Mayor, this is a workshop. We need to talk about the issues. We were able, Lars was able to get together a very detailed book of all the departments, including departmental rollups, all the missions, all the goals, and then all the individual divisions that we got to you guys last week, and also put on the website for the public to see, as well as a detailed five-year plus the current year, so a six-year capital plan, which we're going to try to focus more on this year than we have in years past, because we want to present and bring forward a balanced capital plan, a capital plan that council's aware of what it means to implement. So as we go through each of the departments, the departments with capital issues will be addressing their capital plan and explaining the need for it. As we go through the slides, which are going to be different than this detailed book that you saw and the public had access to, we will be looking at the departmental, upper level, Public Works, Finance, those type of departments. If you have questions, even questions at a more detailed level that you want to address today, it'd be a great time to bring it up. If it's something that you want to know about, but you don't feel we need to talk about it today, definitely always feel free to talk to Lars or myself, and we'd be glad to get you any additional information. And as always, feel free to interrupt if you have a question that comes up. If it is in a few slides, we may say it's in a few slides, and we'll get to it, or, but we definitely want to make this an interactive day. It's an exciting day to roll out a budget for a whole year to the public and everybody, and we really want it to be what everybody is looking for next year. So with that, we'll start down the slides. On slide two, we have kind of a recap of our budget process, which was extensive this year. A lot of it revolved around the formation of our new strategic plan, which is key when we were putting this budget together, as well as the PSPRS unfunded liability and issues that that has made. Now, this slide of dates that we've gone through are just the public meetings that we've had. Staff, of course, has spent hundreds, if not thousands, of hours in between these dates bringing, putting this budget together and trying to meet the needs to achieve your strategic plan. So that's why there's holes from, you know, February to May, because that was a quite labor-intensive process that we went through. So today, we'll be covering, the review this year is a little different. We've always kind of focused on funds before, and we will be looking at funds, because funds are how we account for things and budget for things. But we're, when we talk about departments, we want to really talk about them across the city as a whole. So, they cannot see it in the room. Hopefully, that got it to the room. So today, we'll be looking at the Police Department, Fire Department, Recreation Services, Library, Community Development, and all the general governmental funds, as well as some of the specific capital that's not in the Public Works, more in the special revenue funds. Then tomorrow, we're really talking about capital projects with Public Works and the airport being the focus of tomorrow. So to get it out there right up front, here's the budget compared to last year. We've split it into four different categories, which I'd like to just spend a few minutes talking about. You know, the operating budget is up 2.9%, considering some of the challenges and the service issues to, that we had to bring forward. I think that's a pretty good number. We have budgeted the full PSPRS contribution in our operating budget from our existing revenues for the new year in '18. Whether the tax passes or not, which we'll talk about in a little more detail in a few slides, next year, fiscal year '18, is part of the operating budgets of the city. Most of that is in the general fund, but it's also in the special revenue fund for grants related to the SAFER grant, and of course, the airport for the ARF response that they require out there for their operations. So we have this increase of 2.3 in operating budget, and we always want to keep in mind that 1.5 of that is totally related to PSPRS. So if you pull that out, it's only an $800,000 increase, which was needed for various things through the different departments that we will be looking at as we go through it. Capital, again, capital fluctuates depending on what is brought forward. Most of this capital will be discussed tomorrow with Public Works and Airport, but there is some in today's budget, and we will talk about that. Again, that's a 14% increase, but again, capital is kind of dependent on what projects are scheduled. Our internal service funds, we decided to break those out, because when we include those in operating, it's almost a double accounting, because the charge to the department for the fleet charges is in the operating budget. And then if we put the fleet budget in there as well, it's counted twice. So we broke it out here, and there's a significant increase there, but let's talk about that a minute, and we'll see that later today. That increase of 2.5 million approximately is related to a refunding option that we have for the loan on the fleet maintenance facility. That bond is 10 years old, has a higher interest rate than we could get today. We're going to be looking at refunding options for that as we get into the new year. But to do that, we need to put appropriation in there to be able to proceed with that, kind of like what we did with Haciampa this year. If council decides the markets are where they should be to make that effective, we want to have their appropriation, be able to move forward with that. Now, on the contingency, the contingency line is a different line this year. What we've done, based on input we got from you and the public last year, is we've moved some of the unknown grants. You know, before, we'd have police grants that, fire grants, and all grants in different departments, that they knew they were going to get. SAFER grant, the PANT grant, which we don't get anymore, but the PANT grant, those type of things that they get every year, and then they would have contingencies. We want to put in for a new fire truck, a million dollars for Homeland Security or something. Some grants that they're going to try for, but are more than likely not going to be received. But again, we need appropriation in the budget, so if we do receive those, we can proceed with those. But by having them in the departments, we were kind of overinflating those departmental budgets beyond what their operations really were. So we decided it would be a clearer presentation to the public and to you if we pulled those out and called them a contingency. So now, if the Fire Department gets a grant for a new fire truck, excuse me, part of the acceptance of that grant will be a reappropriation to move that amount of money out of this contingency back into the Fire Department to make that purchase. So we just have kind of a general fund of appropriation that council will look at moving throughout the year as grants are awarded. And additionally, we have another $6 million in that contingency for a new special revenue Getting choked up already, so exciting. The new special revenue fund is related to Proposition 443. So in case 443 passes, that's a special revenue, and that would be accounted for outside the general fund and the special revenue fund. And that will enable us to collect the money and obviously pay it to an account to retire the unfunded liability. Now, we put 6 million in there. If the proposition passes, it's only going to be a half a year. In fiscal year '18, it'd be effective January 1. So if it's 11 to 12 million a year, 6 million is a half a year and would allow us to move that money and to achieve the goal that the voters, if they approve it, want to happen, which is to reduce the liability.
So, Mark, on the grant side of that, these are like, if these were matching funds, have we needed to match part of a grant?
No, these are appropriation for a grant. So if you get 100% grant for a new $500,000 fire truck, you still need to have appropriation in your budget per state law to spend that money.
Gotcha, okay.
So that's what's here. The match for these grants, generally, the contingent grants don't have a budget and match. They're usually anticipating 100% grants for a fire truck or something. So this is just contingency. There's a revenue for this contingency and expense with the contingency, and that contingency would only be used, only be moved if the revenue is there, whether it's a grant or whether it's a new tax under Prop 443. So it's not, we're not spending 8.4 million if those revenues don't come in.
So, Mark, you're saying that 6 million of that 8.4 million is 443?
That's correct.
Absolutely. And this slide here, this is our slide we've been looking at the last couple of years, on slide page four. The blue fund, of course, is the general fund that does all the things the general fund does that we talk about: public safety, recreation, library, and community development, and share, a big share of the general governmental stuff we need to do. The red funds are all restricted to purpose. And if you look on the furthest column, the first item here is the public safety unfunded liability tax, and that's that 6 million is part of that 23 million that's in that restricted fund.
Mark, can you?
I'm sorry, say that again, Mark. I was on the right spot.
Okay. The, if we look at this last column here.
Oh, gotcha.
There's the unfunded liability special revenue fund, and that, again, would only be used if the tax passed. Then there would be a budget appropriation for us to take that money in and pay that money out to reduce that unfunded liability. And again, that's, would be a fund similar to bed tax, which has a dedicated purpose: development impact fees, grants, all those things.
Mark, could you talk a little bit more about the internal services fund and the payoff of the mechanic shop?
The, excuse me, the internal service fund was financed with a MPC bond back in 2007. Additionally, which you'll see in this budget as we go through it, this one will be tomorrow, that 2007 MPC bond was also used partially to expand the transfer station. So the bond was not callable for 10 years. We're in 2017, so the bond is now callable. As of July 1st, it will be callable, so we'll be able to look at it as a possible option to refinance, whether we want to go out and issue a $10 million note of some sort to pay it off, like we did with Haciampa, or whether the council wants to look at other options with available reserves to pay that off, and what the reasons for that would be. And again, that'll be something that we'll look at in a lot more detail when we get to that point of the year. And again, that won't happen. Staff doesn't have the ability to pay off a debt before schedule without approval of the council, but before we do anything, obviously, council would have to take action on that. But again, it's in the budget to give the appropriation, to give the ability, the option to do that. Any other questions on our group?
I guess I'm just not getting it.
Okay. I could tell you had a question about it.
On what?
You want to speak in your mic?
A bond.
Greg, you want to speak in your mic?
I'm sorry, about a bond that we need to renew, but yet, there's a 2.5 million increase. I don't, you keep referring to the bond.
Right.
To the increase.
Okay.
I'm just trying to connect it here.
Yeah, good question, Councilman. It is confusing the way governments have to issue debt and expend that debt. In governmental accounting, issuance of a bond is a revenue. It's a source of funds. So, and then the payment of the liability, which in a business would not even be an income statement issue, other than the interest component, is an expenditure. So in a governmental fund, we have to budget the revenue of 2.5 million for the new bond, and we have to budget the payment of the 2.5 million to pay off the old bond.
Who thinks of this stuff?
Yeah, it's confusing, and it's, if it's confusing to you guys, it's confusing to the public, because that's why I wanted to further explanation. It looks like we're spending more money, but what you're doing is, you're going to pay off a note with a higher interest rate, if it's attractive to you.
Right.
Going forward, because that's good business. But on paper, it looks like you're spending more.
Okay. And again, that's, you know, not to have this devolve into an accounting lesson, but governmental accounting focuses more on a cash flow approach to a business approach, where all capital assets, that's why our capital budget is $84 million. If you were in business and you were going to buy a new vehicle, that's not an expense, that's just the purchase of an asset. But in governmental accounting, our financial statements, our income and our expense statements are basically cash flows. So we show all the cash going out, even though it's for a capital asset that will have benefit for 20 years. So that's the reason that you have to budget this way, and that's the reason it's different than enterprise or for-profit accounting.
Thank you.
So, Mark, I want to go back to the contingency. So that 8.4 million.
Yes.
Is, 6 million of that is 443.
Right. And the other 2.4 is possible grants.
All right. And that's one half of a year.
The 6 million, yes.
Okay.
And again, it may be a little high. We were showing possibly 11, 11 and 1/2 for a full year. Again, monies that don't come in will not be spent.
Sure, of course.
In the contingency, we always need those revenues.
But that says 147%, the same thing you're referring to, Michael. It looks like, my goodness.
Yeah, it's a shame that, from the public's perspective, this looks like a tremendous increase, but what you're doing is giving yourself flexibility to do things if and only if something happens.
We should say when it passes.
Yes. But I mean, even with the grants, and also with the desire to refund your debt, it's only if you want to take advantage of that, but you have to have in your budget the ability to do that.
Got it.
Which creates, in some ways, an unfair picture as to what's going to be spent, because you're just giving yourself some flexibility.
Well, and again, that's why we split out these different categories. So if you're trying to compare operations in the city, we need to look at operations and see, we don't have a 12.2% increase in our budget, we have a 2.9% increase in our budget. You know, and, you know, most of that is related to the PSPRS increase in our payment rate, which is, like I say, fully in the operating budgets, covered by the anticipated operating revenues.
So the 7.80 next year is covered, the lion's share is in the general fund already? So the $6 million, if and only if Prop 443 passes, would be the additional capacity you could send or spend on projects? But in this case, as we go through this budget, I'm going to tell you that I think if it passes, all of it, or most all of it, could go either to PSPRS or some set aside account, because we're going to make do on what we have.
Yeah.
So let me see if I understand. You're projecting next year, we're going to owe about 7.8 million.
Yes.
On our annual cost of PSPRS?
Yes.
Okay. And so right now, that's being looked at coming from the general fund?
General fund, the SAFER grant, and the airport ARF.
Okay. And if 443 doesn't pass, we pay the 7.8 out of general fund. If it does pass, we will pay the 7.8 out of general fund, plus whatever we get from the .75.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Exactly.
With the direction of council. And again, these are great questions, and that's why we wanted to go through these first slides kind of methodically, to make sure this is kind of the fundamental structure. So I want to make sure there's no more questions on the overall budget appropriation or the structure here.
Can you just elaborate a little bit on that number? When you talk about, when Harry was referencing, we will do this, and we will do this, that almost sounds like we're talking about 13 or 14.
It is. In the, if the Proposition 443 passes, the amount of money you would have would be 13 or 14.
And that would be going directly to pay up the liability?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
If council directs.
Yes.
So council could direct, I just want to clarify a little bit, council could direct with some of the 6 million that we open the library.
You have complete discretion with the 6.
Right. It wouldn't be the 6 and the liability, it would be the 7.8 that we budget in the operating funds.
There you go. Of course, I got you. You're right.
Yeah, let me just make this clear, but it's a restricted fund.
Yes.
So the 6 million that goes into the restricted fund, all goes to...
Steve's got it, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't want to complicate it.
Yeah, all goes to the payment of PSPRS unfunded liability.
Absolutely. And any interest that accrues as it transitions through the city's funds will also go as a restricted fund, as soon as that comes in, is credited there, and then as we pay it out to PSPRS or wherever, it may earn interest as it flows through our bank accounts, but that will also be credited to that purpose.
But, Mark, you'd also said that when you were first explaining this situation, the 6 million, or part of the 6 million, or most of the 6 million, would go to paying off the unfunded liability. I just want to make sure that the people out there understand that the 6 millions of restricted fund, we can't touch it. It all goes to payment of PSPRS.
Correct. That is, that is correct. Sorry if I was unclear on that.
And then the 7.8?
It's in the general fund.
Mostly in the general fund, yeah. And that...
We could put whatever we want, as much as we can, toward PSPRS and that, and then do something like open the library.
Correct.
If there are things that we've had to extrude in the budget.
If a majority of council wants to reappropriate, they can do that.
All right.
A quick question. As I understand it, we're now only submitting, I'm not sure what the right word is, 7.65 for about 70% of the, or 70 members of PSPRS because of the Parker Hall case. So that extra 4% has gone over to the employer's side to pay. I'm assuming that's the part of that 7.8, that increase?
You know, the, that's a complicated question, as most things seem to be when relation to the actuarial. When the legislature in 2011 increased the, excuse me, increased the contribution rate for the employees, there was wording in that about that additional 4% was to reduce the liability and could not be used to reduce the employer's share of the liability, stuff like that. So, you know, we'll, yeah, I can't give you a clear answer until I get the next actuarial report, which will have a lot more details of how the whole Parker Hall, now that it's mostly been decided, has been played out and is part of our actuarial.
And when will we know that, November?
Yeah, November and December is when those actuaries come out.
Okay. And as I understand it, too, that Parker and Hall is going to talk into the league. They've indicated that the PSPRS board is leaning toward a lump sum payment to pay back all those people that paid in extra from 2011. So is that going to come out of the general fund, or is that going to come out of our trust assets, which would increase our unfunded liability?
The details of that payoff, again, are still being decided in the courts, but it would be anticipated that that would come out of the trust assets, which will, obviously, you know, you have this liability, you have this many assets, that will increase the unfunded liability. The amount of that and the impact on that, and the $35 million that is currently in the trust, is unknown specifically at this time, but, you know, it will be, you know, probably around $1 million when the interest and everything else is decided from the court. It's not, you know, going to be $10 million, it'll be a lesser amount. Again, it was for the, only those employees that were hired before July 20 of 2011, which was the effective date of the contribution rate increase change.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just concerned that when we take a look at this and looking at some of that unknown that's coming up in the future here, when we see the new actuaries and we understand exactly where we're going to have to go under Parker and Hall, it might be that the best thing for us to do is to submit the 7.8 and the 6, if we get that, this next year, to prevent that unfunded liability from growing too much in the future. Because, you know, like we said, we maybe have some headroom right now, but we're going to lose that in the future.
There's two that we've used so far. Oops, there's three. Got one right there. There's a good bag, yeah.
All right. Are you trying to speak, Councilman Blair?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Council, Mayor, that's an excellent point, and, you know, that's why we do actuaries every year, is to get the impact of the past, of the history of what's happened, whether it's the settlement of this lawsuit, whether it's actual earnings, you know, whatever the impact has been. We get those updated every year, and that's obviously how you manage a trust, a pension trust, and how you move it forward. Any other questions on the, this kind of general global overall look of the budget before we start looking at the details?
Great.
I will turn it over to our esteemed leader.
Who's that?
Who? I was going, who's that?
Lars.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, Lars. You know, before we get off the global, there's some things that I wanted to specifically bring to your attention about what we're trying to do in terms of this budget document, trying to mirror some of your priorities, as I've heard them, and my priorities as the new manager of this organization. And first and foremost is, we have tried to make sure that everywhere we could, your council strategic plan, vision, and desires and goals are part of how we finance this organization, because that really matters to me, that we don't establish strategic goals and a plan, and they sit on the shelf somewhere. We need to make sure that what you guys have come up with is actually how we try to spend the money. And the next two are two things that I really feel strongly about. We need to try to be more innovative, and the mayor talked about this a little earlier in terms of some privatization, but more even with our existing staff, do more with less and come up with new and different ideas as an organization. So I encourage staff to try to find new programs, new things we can do under existing staffing levels, and really without trying to spend a heck of a lot more money. And I think you'll see in some of the next slides, some of the initiatives we've come up with, and some of the really substantive projects and programs we're going to do without additional expenses, because we're leveraging better, I think, what we already have. And also, and I'll talk a little bit more about what this really means, I want to move more to an outcome-based model, where we spend a lot more time talking about what we're trying to accomplish, what council's trying to accomplish, and spend our mudding accordingly.
So, Michael, can I?
Yeah.
Jump in here. What that says to me is, is that you're not saying we had this much money to spend last year, and we spent it, so now we're going to increase it by this much?
Exactly, Steve.
Outcomes are totally different from that standpoint.
It is. It's a totally different model, and you're going to see elements this year, and hopefully next year, you're going to see closer to full implementation. Because it's a paradigm shift about how you budget, it's not something you can just ramrod on top of people. You have to explain what you're trying to accomplish, get them to accept it and buy into the concept, and then bring it on... into the concept, and then bring it on full bore maybe in a year. But what you're going to see is, we've established what I think are some really good performance measurements for each department. The departments have really bought into doing this and not using, going forward, last year's line item as their basis for next year's expenses, and we'll talk a little bit about that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Additionally, the two things that you guys have both all talked about and you've worked really hard on, I think, is trying to address the unfunded liability, to increase some capacity in the general fund to take on more projects. But the way we budgeted this year, we're taking on more project at existing staffing levels. And when we talk about if Prop 443 passes, sending the additional money forward, we can get by this year with what we've created. So I think sending it in its totality makes all the sense in the world, because I think for this year, it demonstrates to the public a commitment to do the right thing. But we can talk more about some of the things you might want to do, or that we could do with the money. And the last thing, I've heard from a lot of you, that you established the market compensation last year, and it was a real commitment to moving forward with that. So these are the priorities that I've heard from you and that the ones that I have. It's not, no list in its totality, and if there's other things that you want us to be thinking about, tell me. Tell us, because I'm really committed to tying what you want to how we spend our money.
So Michael, this holds on to the market compensation plan?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Very good.
I got one question on the market compensation plan. So we had an increase in salaries this last year?
We did.
And so will we see continuous increases in salaries over the next few years until we get up to the, what I think is called a medium market level or something like that?
The way we implemented the market compensation was last year in fiscal '17 or in the current year. I'm already on the new year. In the current year, when we implemented the market compensation, we moved everybody into their ranges, into their markets. So the movement that you see each year, and we're going to talk about the dollar amount, I think, on a future slide here, but the movement you see is just going to be the regular movement of moving people from entry of an area to that market level that has been identified, and then any merit-related increases above that. As council may recall, the plan that council looked at was, you have a market, which is the midpoint of a job range, and people come in somewhere below that, and they move up with adequate performance and merit, 3% each year till they hit that market level. And then any movement past that market level is based on merit only. It's on innovations that they brought or things like that. And that's at a lower level, not that 3%, it's budgeted around 1.5% annually type of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
So moving forward, talking and revisiting your strategic goals and plans, you know, I was thinking this morning, in the seven and a half months that I've been here, that we've made really, I think, some substantive, substantial progress on a lot of these quietly, other than the PSPRS discussion about some of the-
We can't let that be too quiet.
Yeah, no, not too quiet. But, you know, you guys established these four goals, and I think they were terrific goals. Stabilizing the general fund, obviously, that's the Prop 443 discussion. You know, is looking at our economic development and looking at ways that we could maybe better leverage what we've done. I think we've done really a paradigm shift with the hiring of Jim Robb, taking down the false wall, in my opinion, of the difference between economic development and tourism, trying to better leverage our tourism product to help with economic development. You talk about quality of life. We've had some real, and I'm going to talk a little bit further down about some of the initiatives for this year going forward, looking at better utilizing the Lower Lake at Goldwater, and initiatives we're going to do again without spending a tremendous amount of money. Also, some of the things I'm planning on doing with taking better advantage of our heritage and Arizona history. Also, some of the initiatives we have about, you know, maybe some purchase in the future of some open space and the like. And the last one's the service-oriented culture. We've gone through the customer service program, which is really just one side of this. What you're going to see with the performance measurements, a lot of the actual measurements are about the other thing that's really important to me in terms of customer service is responsiveness, and tying our staff responsiveness to how we budget, and making the different departments track how we go about responding to the public, responding to council members, responding internally, because that's the other part of being a service-oriented culture, in my opinion, is, and the other part of being a customer service, a good customer service organization, is how responsive you are.
Michael, one thing I'd like to add to the list, and maybe that's on your next page, is, forgive me, Steve.
Oh, no.
Here it comes.
Oh, no, no.
Looking at the rodeo grounds as a revenue generating asset, it's a $15 million asset at a minimum. That's what we paid for in 2007, and the city is not getting any revenue at all from the rentals and the lease agreement. And it's, it's an underused facility. I think the Prescott Frontier Days group does a great job running the rodeo, and we don't want to get into running the rodeo. But the property itself could be used for a lot more. So we are supposed to be engaging in a master planning process, and I think it's, I think we're two years now into a five-year commitment to do that. So maybe it's time to put it on the list and start talking about master planning.
Councilwoman Wilcox, I think that's a really good idea. It gets back to my larger vision of taking better advantage of the assets you already have, and the idea of getting with the rodeo folks and talking about how that facility could be more of a draw for tourism is, makes perfect sense.
I agree with you.
Well, Gene, thanks for going easy.
Gene, I agree with you sometimes. Don't look so shocked.
Michael, I have a question for you, just off the top of your head. How much of that rodeo ground parcel is actually controlled by Frontier Days?
I think it's a, is there anybody here that can speak better to this, Joe? I think we have the lion's share of control over the facility, except when something's going on. Does it?
Well, but it seems like Frontier Days, you know, rents out the facility.
Yeah, they do.
I mean-
With our permission and our blessing, though. I think that's the way the lease reads.
Correct. Yeah, Councilman Sheska, we do control the lion's share of the property, especially with the exception of during rodeo season. And we have talked to those folks about some events outside of the rodeo. Two years ago, we brought the county fair there, which continues to grow. They did a carnival there in April. So we are working on some of that, but I agree with Councilwoman Wilcox, that there's still more work to do.
So our success with the rodeo grounds does not preclude Frontier Days' success?
Not at all.
No, I think they work part and parcel, and they could actually be mutually beneficial if done properly. Here's a list of some innovations and efficiencies. I told you I challenged the department heads to look at ways we could do new endeavors without increases in cost or increases in staffing levels, because we're not in a financial position to take on more expenses. But an organization that doesn't try new things dies on the vine. So even though we're not in a financial situation that we would all like to be, I challenge staff to try to find things we could do within existing budget items that I thought were valuable to the community. And a lot of what we've done, I think, is very substantive. Debbie's going to talk a little bit later about community policing. She's going to make do with existing staffing levels and have an actual community policing squad that's going to do that. So we're going to, we're going to initiate that program this year, even though she's not having any increased capacity with her employees, and I appreciate that, but I think it's a big deal. You know, code enforcement's become a big issue. Again, we're not adding any bodies, but the departments are thinking about taking on additional responsibility to report complaints, even if they're not the code enforcement official. So it gets back to trying to take advantage of the resources you have on the ground to do a better job of identifying issues. Some of the other things that I think are really a big deal, the public works department or recreation are talking about opening the lower-level Goldwater Lake for recreational usage. We've also talked into the private sector, we need some fill dirt to close in where the old plant used to be in the back, because it's a safety hazard and a liability. We've talked to the private sector about instances when they're doing jobs around there, just bringing their dirt and dumping it, which is a creative solution to a problem without spending any money. And Joe's really committed to trying to make that work this year. I'm not going to go through all of these, but a lot of these ideas, and one of the things that I really wanted to stress is the Arizona Heritage and History Trail that we're working on. We are pitching basically having bronze stars painted to tie our heritage assets and link them in the downtown community, like Charlotte Hall to the Smoke Guy, to the, and it's just a piggyback on what's already a tremendous outdoor tourism product we provide, but a lot of the same people that participate in outdoor tourism also do heritage and historical tourism. Again, we're going to try to make that happen without spending a tremendous amount of money, just do it. So I guess what I'm trying to say holistically is, I don't want to wait on some of these innovations for this magic money to come from the sky. We're going to do what we can do with what we have. And I think that that says a lot for the staff, that they're willing to take these things on without having additional capacity.
We got one question from Mayor Protim.
You know, Michael, thank you too, Gene. This isn't the first time we've brought up the rodeo grounds. It's not the first time we've brought up involving the citizens in model changes for service delivery, whether it's the volunteers at the library, whether it's volunteers in parks and rec, whether it's volunteers to try and help with public works. This community has a lot of citizen talent and involvement, and I go back to my comments in the beginning, it's time to reactivate the citizens' group and use the people who own and are responsible for not only our library, our parks and recreation, our millions, if not billions, of dollars of road infrastructure. We've got talented people here that can help with regards to water, sewer, and trash delivery. Not everything has to be done by a paid government employee. There are things that can be done by volunteers, and I'll bring that up over and over and over. And I'm glad to hear you say, sooner than later, doesn't have to wait another four or five years to where somebody else tries to address it again and again and again, just like we're talking about the rodeo.
No, Jim, I think you're dead on, and I hear you loud and clear, and I'm sure council feels the same way. We need to better leverage our volunteer community, and it gets back to something I've said about taking advantage of the assets you have in your community. And we have tremendous human resource advocates, I mean, excuse me, assets outside of the organization. And we need to better leverage that, and I hear you that, you know, we need to work this year on having that as part of the budget, and because you're right, there's cost benefit associated with that. Matt, did you want to talk about what you're going to do? You guys are talking about doing what, Riddle, on the safety assessments, which I think is also kind of a creative program too.
Yeah, Emory Riddle has a new professor who's doing human safety education there, and he approached us and we approached him. And we're working collaboratively to bring on some of his students to do some safety audits for us. So they've already, they've already started doing them.
And to Jim's point, that's really taking advantage of existing resources and not spending money.
We do this with, for economic impacts and tourism studies, why not use them?
Makes perfect sense. So things are moving in that regard. Another thing I'm very excited about is the master planning of the APS Granite Street Site. Community Development's going to take that on, and we're going to see what we can do with that location and basically add an amenity in an area that really is fairly dilapidated and could use some spursing out. Talk a little bit about outcome-based budgeting. And actually, it transcends budgeting in my mind. It's outcome-based and performance-based mantra in the organization as a whole. It's the idea that we want to figure out what we're trying to achieve as an organization and then at a lower level, the departments, and measure our ability to actually achieve those goals. I gave you an example. You know, one of the things that I think is, in terms of responsiveness, we need to be more responsive to council requests. So basically, you achieve something that's measurable. Right now, what we have is a measure of number of council requests for research. Well, all that shows you is a number of how many times you guys ask for something. It doesn't tell us how quickly we got back to you or responded. So a new measure could be, or would be, fulfill 90% of the request within three business days. Now, do I know if that's a good measure? I think it's pretty good. It's a decent benchmark. If you're going to establish a baseline, which is what we're doing, so the departments have room to grow and do better, but the idea would be you try to meet that 90%. Next year, you try to go to 95%, and eventually, you try to reach the 100% threshold. But as I've established these measures, I've done it a little bit in a vacuum, because this is the first time we're rolling out. If you want to strive or for staff to strive for hire, let's do it. Let's talk about it. And as you look through the budget, you're going to see these performance measurements in everybody's budget, a few of them this year as I roll it out. But next year, I want us to move to a performance-based budgeting that becomes a justification, and there's something tangible you can measure about whether we succeeded or didn't meet our expectations. And again, it is a paradigm shift. It's different than using old line items as your basis. And I'm hoping that by next year, we're a lot further along and you're going to see, you know, closer to complete implementation. There's other communities that have done this and have been very successful. They had the city of Mesa up, what was it, Mark, a couple of months back, January, to kind of give us. I've done this in other communities, but I wanted a third party in the state of Arizona to talk about how this works and what it looks like. And they're doing a really good job with it, and I think they're willing to help us going forward with the continuing implementation. And before I go further, I would open this up to you guys for some discussion. Do you think this is a good change in the paradigm? Because I don't want to go through all this rigmarole if there's not consensus, we're making a good transition.
Well, I do, and certainly that the fact that we're using our strategic plan as where we want to go. I think that is critical. We spend a lot of time developing that, and we certainly don't want it to sit on the shelf.
It can't.
And this, what this will help.
It's going to help with that.
Absolutely.
I think you're moving in the right direction, Michael, and I think that sooner than later, we need to get a more common approach to reporting to the council. You don't hear about it, guess what? We don't hear about it either.
Amen.
So I'm just sharing it with you. In order for us to give you direction, we need to hear what the heck's going on in your life.
And Jim, you know, I was going to bring this up later in the slides, but you and Councilman Blair on the orb, a couple of the events that we happened over the past couple of weeks, the issue at the Highland Games, and then the fire yesterday. One thing I talked about with John Heine that I want to add as a performance measurement is how quickly we give you information before it hits the masses or the media, that we need to be more responsive, and we need to measure that you're informed of unique circumstances or special circumstances almost immediately within one business day, and I want us to strive to do that for you. And we're going to measure that going forward. So thank you both for bringing that to our attention, because that's something we need to talk about implementing.
So do I feel that we have a consensus to move along with performance-based budgeting?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Again, I'm not going to belabor these, but, you know, the first one's exactly what Steve Sheska said. You know, the old way is you look at last year's spending. The new way is you look at next year's goals. That's the idea. That's the concept. That's this in its totality. You know, and the old way is, what are you going to cut? Well, you start, really what you debate is, what are you going to keep and how are you going to deliver it? So that's the concept of the change.
Geez, isn't that novel? What do you want and where does the money come from?
Yep.
Gosh, what a novel thought.
So I'm not going to spend a tremendous amount of time talking about these, because we have talked about these a lot, and we all know what we're facing. Again, our burden for 18 is 7.8, and as you look at the increase in operating expenses for, in the general fund, a million and a half of the 2.2 is basically PSPRS unfunded liability increased burden, right? And you guys wanted to talk a little bit about what it looks like going forward in the next two slides, or if it passes versus if it doesn't. You know, we basically budgeted this year- You know, we basically budgeted each year, and let me start at the bottom slide and work the way up. You know, it's not '18 that's the problem. The problem is longitudinal. It's what happens in '19, '22, '23.
Six.
We can make do in '18, and I don't think, I want to be honest with people, based on the fact you've been, you know, fairly fiscally conservative, we have a decent fund balance, we can do what we're going to need to do next year. The burden is going forward as the unfunded liability and our, you know, the percentage of it as a percentage of the general fund increases. That's when the problem occurs. So we can make do going forward. We can't. So that's really basically what these slides mean.
So basically what we're
And this graphically depicts that.
Yeah, so Michael, basically what we're saying is, yeah, we can get through, and we will get through.
Because we're gonna
But it's really going to double down on us really soon.
That's exactly what happens.
Sooner we can start paying this, you know, I really like the idea, the $6 million and the 7.8, putting as much as we can right to it.
Yeah, and you know, like I said earlier, because we're making do this year, I think you send it all this year.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's the beauty of making year-to-year decisions instead of, you know, tying the hands and discretion of council. Next year might be different.
Yeah.
You might feel next year that there's new programs you want to do. We can talk a little bit about that, full implementation of some of these things. I mean, Debbie's going to make do on having the community policing, but it's not a perfect world. If you want this to be sustainable long-term, you're going to have to put more bodies on it. I mean, that's just the reality of the circumstances. You want to reinstate Sunday library hours? You're going to have to, you know, spend some additional money. We're doing what we can with what we have. And you know, we've had a lot of conversations about code enforcement. You want more officers eventually, you're going to probably have to hire some and have more. So, you know, and here's the problem, and this is the last bullet point that I thought was on the last one. What happens if you don't do this and you get a no going forward? I'll tell you what, you are going to eliminate positions, you're going to have furloughs, and you're going to sell income-producing assets, but it's going to be a fire sale because you're not going to do it in the way the mayor wants to look at privatization, where you take advantage of your assets and do it in the way that benefits the city. You're going to do it because you have to do it, and that's the worst way to make determinations about things that actually bring you income. And you know, you're going to have really tough decisions because in FY '20, the nine firefighters, there were seven that we have now, and the two, when you have some attrition, they're grant-funded. So you're probably going to have to eliminate those positions and find other ways to deliver the service, or not have the service delivered at all.
Or brownout stations.
Yeah.
Mayor Protim's got a question.
Thank you. You know, I hate borrowing money. It's not what I like to do. And we've got a liability that we didn't borrow on. It's a liability that happened, okay? I go back to something I said earlier on, prior before you, but it's, I brought up the idea, what happens if we go to the bank, we get the 83 million, we pay up the liability where it belongs, then we use 443 to pay off the note to the bank. Has that been fully explored?
And I don't think fully explored. We've explored it a little bit, but we certainly are going to explore, if this passes, the best way to pay down this in the most timely and efficient and effective manner possible.
Well, I think the point there being is if indeed we borrowed the money to pay off or pay up the liability, we can pass 443 to pay off the note we borrowed, take care of this if the interest on the note or the resolution to the note puts this community at less liability.
Sure, and I'm sure you're on the same page, Jim. The one thing you wouldn't want to do is proceed with that in advance of a proposition because then you would tie yourself to a debt you can't pay. You've got to have the revenue source to pay it.
And I understand that.
I know you do.
I understand that. What we haven't done is we haven't gone forward yet to see if 443 passes, what are our options now?
Sure.
What we can do is just what you did. If 443 doesn't pass, what's that service model going to look like? And you're right, we're going to do the best we can. We're not going to discontinue police.
Nope.
We're not going to discontinue fire. We're not going to discontinue anything. What we will is eliminate the money we have on hand, deliver the services.
Amen. And then you guys talked a little bit about the market compensation, and my understanding it was a commitment you wanted to proceed with, and I wanted to get an idea. You guys have an idea about how much money we're talking about in the general fund. The cost is about $550,000. Citywide, it's $862,000. That's basically the financial impact of that. I mean, I think it's good to talk about some of the changes we've coyly made, that I think there's been some addition through some subtraction and reorganization. You know, the field and facilities department was dissolved, and public works took on street maintenance and solid waste, and I think that's been a good move. I also think fleet services and the facilities management to rec has worked, and through that, we eliminated a department head position, which I think is substantial as well. Again, something I said earlier, the tourism and economic development need to work hand in hand. Feel really good about the direction we're headed. I feel really good feedback from the tourism community about the direction we're headed on the tourism product we're presenting to the community. Feel really good about the direction Jim Robb's working on us for us at a substantially lower cost, but the guy's got more energy than me times 12. We're moving code enforcement to community development. Part of my idea on that is Mike Fleming could utilize the resources of other folks that are out in the field, the building inspectors and the like, to identify code enforcement issues, and they could work hand in hand, if you will, about addressing code enforcement issues. So he has more backup, for lack of a better term. We've moved the fire safety inspection functions from the fire department to community development. You'll see that in the organizational chart. The building inspection department is going to take on the fire inspections, and the fire inspectors will be cross-trained on building inspections, and the building inspectors will be cross-trained on fire inspections. So you have a very large team of folks doing all the inspections, and I think you're going to see real efficiencies with that kind of product. I feel really good about that direction. And I know a few of you felt really that the fuels reduction, seasonal staff, moving the rec was a good idea, and that's in this budget as well. And here's the beautiful award chart as it looks.
Before we go any further, why don't we take a five-minute break?
Okay.
And then we'll go into these charts.
Okay.
Okay?
Excuse me, sir. It is. I sound like Faye Dunaway or something?
I need you to clear my throat.
Is this my last slide? I might turn it over. Okay.
He's got one.
Excuse me. I just thought this was an interesting slide, and you've seen this a little bit before, but it talks about FTEs or full-time equivalents in our staffing levels. And you can see holistically, there's a trend here. It's a pretty substantial trend in my mind, that we're trying to do as much as we can with what we have, and in some cases, we're actually doing more with less. And I think that's a good segue for me to turn things over to Mark, and we can start getting in some of the
One comment I'd like to make on this is to take a look at '09 and '10 and '11, and that's when we had a significant reduction in our TPT receipts, about $4 million a year. And that's what precipitated that huge decline in equivalent positions. And so, you know, if we have a further downturn in the future, you know, we can't always rely that we're going to be getting $11 or $12 million for that .75. It could be considerably less than that.
You're dead on, Mayor. That's definitely something we have to have in the back of our minds as a possibility.
One other thing just to note on this before we move on. I'm not letting it move on.
Did you just like override my ability to change this line?
Yeah, sorry. You know, and you're right, Mayor. You know, this obviously was in response to the economy and the shift in our revenue. And councils at the time were very proactive. You know, we got ahead of this. We got on it. As it started down, we started making these changes. You know, and that's obviously, you know, part of the, you know, advantage of looking at this in such detail every year as we go. But from '08 to '18, we're looking at a 15% decrease across the board in city staff, which is a significant reduction in the size of city government.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Go ahead.
Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but since like '14, maybe '13, '14, let's start with '14 on that downturn of personnel, our revenues have increased.
Our revenues have increased, and that's an excellent point, but our operating cost has gone
What I'm saying is, just because our revenues increased, we haven't
That's right.
Correct. You know, that's a good point.
We're actually crossing that line.
Right.
That's good.
So as we look, this, we threw this graph in here for, or this table in here, this was part of the book. It's part of our budget document, it was part of the preliminary budget document you get. It's a great summary of the departments as a whole. It brings up every department, shows their number of FTEs, the personnel cost. That personnel and cost includes pensions, it includes workers' comp, it includes health insurance, includes all the costs associated with it. So, you know, you start dividing out the fire department, and you get some pretty scary numbers when you divide 10 and a half million by 65 people. But we got to remember, a lot of that is because they have almost 100% pension costs. But it gives you the ability to see every department, where their money's spent for the city as a whole to get to this budget. And I didn't really, we didn't really put this in here to go over it in detail because we're going to look at each one of these areas. But as you look at the budget document, which you got early to look at and is online for the public to look at, as well as our final budget book, which hopefully will be online soon after budget is adopted, we have a lot of these tables that allow you to look at the city kind of as a whole at a glance and see where your money as the citizens are going.
Mayor Protim has a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Last year, our budget was around 167, if I'm not mistaken. And between capital and increases in PSPRS is where the majority of the 20 million difference is. Could you elaborate on that just a little bit or give some sort of sanction to that comment?
Yeah, and again, that's what we looked at in the first slide. We only had a $2.5 million increase in our operating budget between the two years, but we had an $11 million increase in our capital. We had that refunding that I talked about, which is another 2.5 million. We had a contingency of $6 million for potential PSPRS tax to pay that down. So, yeah, the majority of the increase is related to capital projects or contingencies.
And those capital projects typically come from dedicated revenue?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that isn't something that's just coming out of the general fund. It's coming from revenue that was specifically allocated to spend on those crack capital improvements, which could include your sewer, could include some of your roads, could include your water lines, et cetera. Am I correct?
It does, yes. And that is going to be the main focus of tomorrow's meeting, is we're going to look at the very large capital project and talk about what is in there.
Yeah, well, anytime we sit, especially in front of the public, and we discuss, you know, a $20 million increase in our budget, I think it's really pretty incumbent upon us to make sure that across the nation, so to speak, especially on television, we're putting it out there that while the 20 million seems like an increase, in actuality, here's why.
Good comments, Councilman.
I had a question. On footnote number one, you refer to the use of general fund
And I think, Mark, since 2007, 2008, we've had a significant increase in our PSPRS unfulfilled liability, so we really had to offset that.
Yeah, that also had to be used, so that did also keep the number of full times down. This graph, Mayor, to answer your question about revenue increases, what we have here, and we don't show this on all the graphs, but we have our budget for '17, we have our estimated ending, and then the budget for '18, and then some change in the budget. As you can see, just starting at the top, local taxes, our budget had come in about $500,000 higher than we budgeted in '17, which is great news. We're having good sales tax activity, a lot of it tied to increased construction, whether that's new houses or new retirement centers being built, or apartment buildings, whatever, are all bringing that up. So, we budgeted essentially a flat sales tax growth, because again, construction is more of a one-time sales tax revenue. Once it's built, you don't build it again. So, we're budgeting flat, but that actually gives us the 3.4% or a half a million dollar increase over our '17 budget, which is something that helped us to achieve the PSPRS payments this year within our operating budgets. Overall, state shared revenues also had relatively good growth, about 3.4, another almost $400,000 there. We look, and there's a line here called total unrestricted revenues, and that's about $31 million, and it's up about $900,000. And that is the amount, as you look through our book, the budget book, you see departments' funding sources, and it talks about tax base. That's the unallocated tax base. That's the money that council has to spend on what council wants to spend it on in the general fund, public safety, parks and rec and those things. So, it's not just our local sales tax, it's all these other revenues. It's that 30 million, you know, $30.1 million. And again, good growth this year, up $917 or almost 3%. Then we have some dedicated revenues, the licensed, the library district, obviously is only used for the library, it's essentially flat this year. License and permits can only be used to provide those license and permit services. Service charges, as it implies, can only be used to provide that service. And then fines and forfeitures are restricted to police and those type of things. So, overall, our revenues are up 850,000, about 2.4%.
Why was there such a large decrease in the licenses and permits?
Excellent question. I should have made a note of that. But the difference is, we had a contingency in '17 related to the business license. And as you know, we made a structural change to that a few months ago, eliminating the residential rental component of it. So, we had about a $200,000 reduction in that appropriation. So, that makes up that whole amount. And again, it still is covering the cost associated with the business license.
I've got a question. I know it was last year, we had a 7.8% increase in revenues. This year, only 2.4. It's still up, but, you know, why was, why did we have such a dip even though we went up?
Wasn't really a dip. It was, again, it was that large contingency for the business license had that large increase. We also had several new service charges we increased, increased parking fee and those type of things last year.
All right. Thanks.
So, what would a budget workshop be without looking at tax rates and comparing to our neighbors? These are the same graphs we show every year, showing our property tax rates compared to the, we call it central, you have a fire district, but of course, it's the new district, whatever it's called. Thank you. As you can see, our tax rate is continuing to go down. Again, secondary tax, we paid off the last of the lakespan in '17. The payment will be going out in the next month. So, next year, there is no secondary property tax for the city of Prescott, bringing our rate down to our $200,000 home to about $56,000, in looking at last year's rates, which is all I have for the fire districts. You know, that's compared to $550.
Do you have a projection on, if we were to levy the maximum that we're allowed, how much revenue that would...
To the, this budget and the revenues we showed included the increase associated with new construction that was added to the rolls. We did not include the 2% increase because it is relatively small, about $31,000, $34,000 is what it would have added. So, again, that'll accumulate, and if council next year budget wants to do it, you know, they can be added to whatever they want to do next year. But with all the publishing requirements and all those things for such a small increase, we decided to not include it in the budget for this year.
Gene, I think during the strategic plan going forward, we kind of put that table, that option of raising that rate, I believe, didn't we?
I don't recall that we made a decision to do it. Something we'd do it every year when we do the budget and then levy the property tax.
You're right.
Again, this is more of a detailed breakout for the current tax year, and just to show the difference between the residents, we always use the $200,000 home, $490 more if you live in the county compared to the city. If you have a business in the county compared to the city, it's $906 a year more for a $200,000 business. We also included some sales tax charts, again, just to remind everybody, sales tax rates in our surrounding communities and what they provide. Chino Valley, of course, doesn't have fire or EMS, neither does Prescott Valley, their rates are 10.35 and 9.18. And Prescott's current is 8.35. And again, we showed the Prop 443 as kind of a contingency on that, so you can see where it would be. If that does pass, it would be 9.1. So, this is our pie graph, and we did this a little differently, looking at the operating expenses of the general fund again. Now, this is the expenses that hit that unfunded, our unreserved revenue, that $31 million we were talking about. We've netted out the direct revenues out of each of these different operational areas that are associated with them. So, if you, you know, if you get rid of parks and rec, you don't have parking fees. If you get rid of whatever, you don't have the revenue from. If you get rid of the library, you don't have the library district monies. So, with that, this is just the impact on that tax base, which is the important thing. And we've pulled PSPRS, the unfunded liability portion of the payment out as its own piece of the pie, so that you can have a better idea of what percentage of this tax base, police and fire really is or should be with the normal pension costs and the normal costs. And again, as you can see, the PSPRS unfunded liability, almost 20% of our general fund.
Got one question from the Mayor Protem.
Okay, I want to go back just a little bit. When we talked about the 9.1 as compared to the 9.18, the 9.1 on the city of Prescott, if 443 passes, contemplates paying our obligations for police and fire. We provide police and fire out of that 9.1. Am I correct?
Yes.
And Prescott Valley's 9.18, they're in a district of which some of their costs of providing fire is on their property tax, not on their sales tax.
Significant portion of it.
So, I think, I think the residents need to always hear these sorts of things on a continual basis. So, when we're looking at a special situation, that we keep focused on what's at the end game, we have, without a doubt, a liability in the pension fund that has to be paid. The mechanism that we've been graced with through either state legislature, whatever the case is, is our sales tax, and we can still do that and keep our sales tax lower than the competitors next door, number one, while providing our police and fire. So, I'm just sharing that. And I think every time we talk about that, it's an important issue to bring up.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right.
Councilman Shiska.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Mark, I'm looking at the general fund revenues and I'm seeing revenues of $565,856 for the library district.
Yes.
Some people have talked about privatizing the library, the possibility, not anybody here, but I think some people have talked about that. And would that $565,856 go away?
I'm sure it would depend on how, what that privatization looked like, and we'd have to work that through, obviously, state law in the library district. If privatization meant the city hires somebody to run the library and we still pay for it out of the tax base, I would imagine that we would still receive the funding from the library if all the requirements of that contract were met. If that means somebody just taking the whole library and the city not paying anything, that would take a little more research through legal and the library district to tell for sure.
Okay, thank you. I have a question on the last chart. Or on the general fund expenditures and transfers out, is that where we are now?
Not yet, but we can get there. Oh, the pie graph? The pie graph or the next one? This is the, this is kind of a summary look, and then we're going to go into each kind of detail of each of these departments, but we just wanted to go through this in whole. Obviously, we can just walk down the slide, address each of the changes. The city council is down, that's related to cost recovery. City clerk is up. It's because of the election costs this year. We have that significant election, the two primary and the secondary. The city court had to have some additional temporary staff related to implementation of a new court system required by the state. City manager obviously had elimination of two positions. The payroll function was moved out of HR, which is part of the city manager, and moved in, back into finance. And some other operating costs were also reduced. Legal had some turnover in staff there, which, you know, they're a big labor component in their budget. And they also had lost or moved a half-time, full-time, a half-time person, permanent half-time person into code enforcement to help fund the secretary there. The rodeo ground obviously had a reduction there, a significant reduction. That was because there was some maintenance monies put in the budget in '17 to take care of the steps. When bids came in on the steps, it was significantly above that maintenance amount. So, it's in the budget this year as a capital item, and we'll be looking at that in a few slides in more detail. But that did bring their operating budget down. Finance, the business license contingency was taken out of finance, which was that 200,000. And we also moved a position with the advent of the state collection, or the state taking over collection of sales tax. We were able to reduce a position in finance and move that to where it was needed in utility billing to hopefully bring back some of the customer service levels we've had to cut there over the last few years, like drive-through hours and those type of things. Community development has an increase, again, related to some of the things the city manager alluded to, the movement of the fire inspectors, the movement of code enforcement and those things. And the CDBG, some temp salary there. Recreation services had a pretty significant increase, primarily related to a maintenance that needed to be done on a ball field related to a dangerous light pole structure. Again, it's kind of, maintenance is not really a capital item when it's something that needs to be gone, done on an ongoing basis. So, that was part of their budget. And also, the movement of the fuels reduction crews into recreation, which was to get them out of fire and put them into recreation. That was a significant part of that increase.
I've got one question on the movement of the wildland fire portion to recreation services. I think in the past, the fire department was the one to put in for the grants for wildland firefighting or clearing.
Yes, sir.
So, is that still going to be coming from the fire?
Yes, sir. Those are fire grants, and those grant requests will have to come through the fire.
Okay.
And when those individuals work on those grants, of course, it won't be charged to the general fund, it'll be charged to the fire grant fund.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Police increase is related to the PSPRS, which was about 551,000. During earlier budget cuts, a year or two ago, training was taken to probably dangerously low in the police department. So, we had to restore some training there to make sure our officers are trained. And then they have some other maintenance issues related to firearms replacement on a regular basis. And then, of course, there was a reduction as code enforcement was moved out of police and put into community development. So, the net effect of that is what you see up there. Regional communication had an increase related to software licenses on the new system that were budgeted there. Fire department, of course, had a PSPRS increase, a significant amount. They also had the reduction related to the movement of inspectors to community development.
So, the increase in the fire department was pre-funding the social security benefit?
No, the increase in the fire department is the PSPRS increase.
Yeah.
That is a more significant increase there.
Yeah, but what was that increase for? As I recall, the legislation went too forward in that, or maybe it was 1428, established basically social security for firemen now, is that correct?
What it did is it established an optional hybrid model that people in PSPRS who are not part of social security, which are firemen, as you point out, Mayor, are that way, will be able to elect to go into that hybrid. That election will need to be done in July of this year, and we'll have a better idea of how many of the employees elect to do that. And again, it's, you know, I don't know if 100% will elect, because it also increases the amount the employee has to pay in, as opposed to the city. We did include a small factor for that, but the primary increase in PSPRS was just the increase in the rate to 92%. Recreation services had a pretty significant increase, primarily related to a maintenance that needed to be done on a ball field related to a dangerous light pole structure. Again, it's kind of, maintenance is not really a capital item when it's something that needs to be gone, done on an ongoing basis. So, that was part of their budget. And also, the movement of the fuels reduction crews into, into recreation, which was to get them out of fire and put them into recreation. That was a significant part of that increase.
I got one question on the movement of the wildland fire portion to recreation services. I think in the past, the fire department was the one to put in for the grants for wildland firefighting or clearing.
Yes, sir.
So, is, is that still going to be coming from the fire?
Yes, sir. Those are fire grants, and those grant requests will have to come through the fire.
Okay.
And when those individuals work on those grants, of course, it won't be charged to the general fund. It will be charged to the fire grant fund.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure. Police increase is related to the PSPRS, which was about $551,000. During earlier budget cuts, a year or two ago, training was taken to probably dangerously low in the police department. So, we had to restore some training there to make sure our officers are trained. And then they have some other maintenance issues related to firearms replacement on a regular basis. And then, of course, there was a reduction as code enforcement was moved out of police and put into community development. So, the net effect of that is what you see up there. Regional communication had an increase related to software licenses on the new system that were budgeted there. Fire department, of course, had a PSPRS increase, a significant amount. They also had the reduction related to the movement of inspectors to community development.
So, the increase in the fire department was pre-funding the social security benefit?
No, the increase in the fire department is the PSPRS increase.
Yeah.
That is a more significant increase there.
Yeah, but what was that increase for? As I recall, the legislation went too forward in that, or maybe it was 1428, established basically social security for firemen now. Is that correct?
What it did is it established an optional hybrid model that people in PSPRS who are not part of social security, which are firemen, as you point out, mayor, are that way, will be able to elect to go into that hybrid. That election will need to be done in July of this year, and we'll have a better idea of how many of the employees elect to do that. And again, it's, you know, I don't know if 100% will elect, because it also increases the amount the employee has to pay in, as opposed to the city. We did include a small factor for that, but the primary increase in PSPRS was just the increase in the rate to 92%.
Yeah, I just remember, I was at a meeting at the league, and they indicated we had, part of this increase was going to be pre-funding some of that, social security, so.
Yeah, and again, as part of that hybrid option.
Right.
And that'll be an option going forward even for new fire employees in tier three. But all fire employees in tier two only, not in tier one, are eligible to elect that by the July date.
Okay. Thanks.
The non-departmental in the general fund is related to that retirement reserve we talked about earlier. And then the grant matches are the grants that are budgeted that we generally get, anticipate getting, that do require a match from the general fund. Several of those are those wildland interface grants do require matches on several of those. And then, yes, sir.
Mark, if I could, real quick, mayor. Annually, when your, with the city employees, medical renewal comes up, is it like the private sector? Is it once a year?
Yes, it's once a year. We're part of the, you have a pie combined trust, and the increase this year was pretty minimal, as a 3%.
So, yours was, your employees were done earlier, because like, the college is in December. So, we always had to guess what kind of deal we're going to get in our budgetary process.
Right. And again, we're part of the combined trust, which is the county that you have a pie college, the city and Chino Valley. So, since we're all governments, we all try to get that rate known by the time we get into our budget.
Okay.
So, it does allow us to do that. Again, it was a 3% increase, which was a relatively small, when you look at
Right.
healthcare trends across the country. And the airport operating transfer, again, is to cover deficits from the airport operations, which includes the fact that airport does fund the ARF truck, which is for airfield response. It does, as per council policy, does fund internal share of the admin costs of the city and those type of things. But their revenues are not sufficient to meet all that and the other costs they have out there. So, there is a $375,000 transfer budgeted to cover that.
Well, I guess that's my question. I thought the airport was an enterprise fund. So, why, why do we have this in the general fund?
Because council has directed that the airport be subsidized to cover the cost out there, and that subsidy comes from the general fund, the same way grant matches come from the general fund.
So, what does the airport provide in a way of funding every year?
In total?
Yes.
I don't have that on the top of my head. We do have a slide, it's in tomorrow when we talk about the airport, so we can talk about that in more detail then, if that would be okay.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious, because we don't have any other enterprise funds there, but we do have the airport, and so I'm just curious.
Correct. And that's based on council direction in the past to fund, to subsidize the airport operations, as well as the airport grant matches, which is.
Well, we may need to, need to take another look at that.
Yeah. Capital projects for this year is in the general fund, are there below, and we'll see them in detail as we go through the departments, relatively level. The, some of those are carryover, about three-quarters of a million of that 2.3 is a carryover from this year related to computer projects that didn't get done, the, not didn't get done, but aren't to the point of paying the vendor at this point. They are all in process. And then we have grant matches also here and airport matches related to their capital projects. And again, as we get to the grants and as we talk about airport tomorrow, we can get a lot more into the detail of what, what is being funded from the general fund. We have that broken out on those slides.
I just want to make one count. I met with the FAA just the other day, and coming up to the end of the fiscal year for the federal government is September, and they indicate there could be some funding for Arizona, and particularly for our airport. So, just want to make sure that if we do get some funding for them, because we do have some projects that right now could be funded, that if they do fund those, that we have the matching funds to support that.
And that's why we include those in the budget, and we look at those in the capital plan. When we talk tomorrow, we'll talk about those.
Okay.
You know, some of them, you know, are kind of significant in out years, and we will need to address how we're going to fund those if we do move forward the terminal or things like that.
Okay. Well, I only brought it up because we were talking about grant matches here in airport capital, and I saw a reduction. So, I just wanted to know if this is the best place to talk about, or we can do it tomorrow?
We'll have more detail tomorrow.
Okay.
I think it'll be a little clearer on that slide. And, and all these matches, the grant matches and the operating transfers for the grants and the airport, they only happen if they're needed. So, their budget shows a need for $375,000 operating match. If their revenues come in above that or their expenses are below that, we don't transfer 375. We only transfer what is necessary to fund the operations.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure. So, in summary, and then we can let Lars work you through the rest of these budget slides, is the general fund, we talked about the revenue and the transfers, and $36.4 million for this year is what we're budgeting expenditures and transfers out, 36. That gives us an operating surplus, if you will, of 523, 524. And that's why we say, you know, this budget is operationally balanced. We are covering our operations with our operating revenue. We look at capital, obviously, it was a big number, 2.7. Part of that's going to be coming from our partners in the dispatch center, almost $800,000. So, we will, our budget is to spend 1.4 million in capital. That, again, part of that can come from that surplus operating reserve, but the rest of it will come from the fund balance reserves, which are healthy, and we'll talk about in a second. Let's talk about them now. That gives us $31 million in general fund, fund balance. The breakout of the general fund, fund balance is on the bottom there. We have our operational policy, per council policy, 20% of operating expenditure, 7.3 million. We have the long-term obligations, primarily, that's that, that pension, that retirement contingency that we talked about earlier with Councilwoman Wilcox had a question on. So, that amount goes down every year as those employees retire and we make those payments. We have an internal loan to the golf course, which we'll talk about later today, the golf course operations. But that loan is almost 4.5 million, and that will be a policy issue the council will have to deal with in the next few years, what we need to do with that. And then we have a portion, excuse me. We have a portion of our general fund, which is tied up with a, a, a old, used to be a special revenue fund, was by council policy. It doesn't meet the requirements of special revenue fund anyway. It was the old property sales fund, where we sold surplus property several years ago, and council had a policy that any surplus of sales tax above budget would go into this fund for capital projects or economic activities. A few years ago, the law or the standards changed in governmental accounting, not really allowing that to be a special revenue fund because of how it was created. So, it's part of the general fund, but we still do track those numbers separately, and that's what we call that capital projects reserve, is what's left in there. So, with that, we have 16.5 million of unassigned fund balance available, which is very good. It's a very healthy general fund and has enabled us to be able to move forward some of these projects.
So, Mark, is this what we refer to as our reserves?
Yes.
Okay.
For the general fund.
Kind of the, the rainy day funds.
Each fund has their own.
Rainy day for the general fund.
Yes. So, with that, we're going to start going into the individual departments, and I'm going to, obviously losing my voice, so I'm going to have Lars talk through those and answer your questions. He put them all together, so he should be able to cover any questions you have on them.
Mayor and council, I'm Lars Johnson, Budget and Tax Manager. I'm very excited to be here today, mainly because it means we're close to the finish line of adopting the budget in about a month or so. So, I'll go through this pretty quick. Mark has already touched on, you know, the biggest changes, but this new presentation model, where we present the entire department as a whole and all their funding sources, I think is very, very good to understand how the departments are funded. So, I'll talk about just the high-level stuff, and if you have any questions, as we've gone through the book that we gave ahead of time, now would be a good time to ask, time permitting, and also, department heads are here to help with any detailed questions. So, first, the first department that we're going to discuss is the city manager. City manager's department, there's other divisions rolled up into it besides the city manager's office. There's the newly formed community outreach and tourism, human resources, water, resource management, and information technology. The city manager's office, that decrease in budget is directly related to change in personnel, the elimination of the deputy city manager position, as well as the addition or movement of executive assistant back into the city manager's office. The community outreach and tourism is a brand-new division, but the divisions that existed before are reflected in past years. So, the increase, it's not coming to me. I think that, anyway, I skipped that one. If you have a question, we'll answer it. But human resources are related to the payroll function moving to finance. The water resource management division increase in operations is a change in debt service. The debt on Big Chino Water Ranch was refunded, was FY '14, and next year would be the first year that we're required to pay principal on that. There was a few years where we were just paying the interest on that borrowing. Information technology has a few, a slight increase based on increase for networking and software costs. The capital budget here strictly relates to water resources.
Lars.
Yes?
Real quick, I don't know if you've got an answer for me. You don't? It's not a big deal. Last year, two years ago, maybe, maybe a little longer, we invested a lot of money in timekeeping software, so we didn't get dinked by the Obamacare fiasco. With the changes or proposed changes that Congress is coming up with, will the maintenance of that software be a necessity?
That project, I'll let Mark answer.
Because we spent a lot of money on that software.
We did. And staff is, you know, we've had changes in the structure of payroll moving it back to financing. And we are currently evaluating the, that project and what that project will look like going forward. The maintenance, the annual maintenance of that project is, is not super significant when you look at the size of our employees. So, the issue with the continuation of that or whatever happens.
So, it was just the initial purchase of the software that.
The time clocks is what the big cost was for that. And, you know, again, as we look at that this year and decide what that's going to look like, we can definitely bring council an update when we have a more flushed-out plan on how that will be done.
Thank you.
I was just going to piggyback on that and say that we've looked at what we were trying to accomplish and where we are, and we've had to back up and punt and try to figure out how to make it work. And we do need to do presentations to you guys sometime in the next few months.
The increase in the community outreach and tourism came to me. That is budgeting for the increase of fund balance in the bed tax fund. So, the bed tax allocations are rolled into this division, so that's the increase. Yeah, and we will have the detail on the bed tax fund after these department summaries. The department, the funding sources is a very interesting way to look at it, because we are rolling all of this information as, to get a total department, and we want to see, you know, how much of that is affecting the general fund versus other funds. The general fund impact is decreasing, primarily related to a reduction in staff and, and shifting of cost, cost recovery. The enterprise funds, that mainly accounts for the water resource management division, as well as the, the cost recovery of the four other divisions. So, that huge increase is directly related to the, the capital for the Big Chino Water Ranch. Any questions on this?
Yeah, I've got a couple of. I know it's last year, personnel was 54.5. This year is 42.8. I think I know that from some of the reductions that we had in personnel. Other services and charges last year were 23.6, and now they're 37. Maybe I just didn't quite hear it. What is, what caused that increase in services and charges?
I'm sorry, which division were you talking about?
Other services and charges, 37. Last year it was 23.6. So, I just wanted to know what the increase was from.
Primarily, that other services and charges, sorry, Lars, didn't mean to cut you off, is related to the water resource area, related to the monitoring and modeling projects that are being done as part of that agreement. Those fluctuate significantly over the years.
Yeah, I see the big increase there, yeah. Okay. Thanks.
The, we're showing org charts for each division, each department here, just to, mainly just recap on personnel changes, and then, interesting, you know, the reorganization of, of city departments and divisions, you can kind of see where they land. And this new division, community outreach and tourism, now includes the community outreach manager, economic development coordinator, and then the tourism sales coordinator. So, that, those changes in personnel reflect the reorganization. The city manager's office had the reduction of the deputy city clerk, as we, or deputy city manager, as, as we discussed. The .75, that's the economic development director position, was three-quarters funded in the general fund or in this division, and then a quarter was funded in the airport. So, that's that reduction there. Human resources, moving payroll analyst to finance. So, next, we'll briefly talk about budget and finance. There's not a whole lot of new stories here. We've already discussed the movement of personnel between divisions is mainly the increase. The budget and privilege tax decrease there relates to the, the contingency we had last year for the business license implementation. We find that we didn't need that much. Neither are we getting as much revenue as we anticipated. The, this general fund source of funds is the interesting presentation like Mark was alluding to. If you look at the tax baseline, that is the, the impact to the unrestricted revenues, that is decreasing slightly. And then you see the cost, the cost recovery of the department is also impacting the special revenue funds, enterprise fund, internal service funds. And the utility billing division, that is, is essentially 100% in the enterprise funds. It's split up into the water, wastewater, and solid waste. Our org chart hasn't changed much, the, obviously, addition of the payroll analyst in the accounting services, as well as moving one accounting clerk into utility billing. Moving quickly, so just stop me if you have any questions. A lot of this has been already addressed, so I didn't want to belabor it. City clerk, you'll see the large increase in elections. There's a budget for $222,000 for the elections that will be held this fall.
Is that both for general and primary?
Yeah, that's, that's the two, the two phases there. That accounts for 40% of her budget, or the city clerk's budget, so it's very substantial. And obviously, does change throughout, depending on the year when the elections happen. The funding sources, only $93,000 remains in the general fund. That's, I think that's 24% of the total budget. So, all the other costs are distributed to the other city operating units based on their, their budgets. The city clerk's org chart and. The city clerk's org chart and personnel, the secretary halftime position has been moved back to the city manager's office, being that it better serves that division. City court, changes here, the biggest, you'll see a decrease in other services and charges as well as a corresponding increase in personnel. That's essentially the new city judge is now a temporary employee versus the previous one was a contract employee. So it's just shifting of cost to a different line. They did also increase our requests temporary staff, as Mark mentioned earlier. If you look at the tax base impact line again, that's increasing 5%. Their charges for services and fines do cover a portion, as well as they get some grants that cover a portion of their operating costs. Personnel here, you'll see that the city magistrate or the city judge is a temporary employee, so it's not counted as a permanent FTE position, full-time equivalent. The court administrator and bailiff, they're actually county employees that we then pay for through a contract with Yautia County. The legal department has a decrease in personnel costs related to turnover. The impact to the tax base to the general fund has decreased significantly because of that, as well as a slight change in the cost recovery percentage. The internal, you'll see the other services and charges seem to be pretty high, but that includes risk management. So that includes our insurance policy for general liability and workers' comp claims. That's why that shows quite high there. All of that, all of the expenditures are funded directly as an internal service fund, and that's reflected in that line at the bottom. Jumping ahead to their org chart and personnel, their changes here is they reclassified a position to a paralegal from the secretary, I believe, yeah. Oh, the legal administrating position became a paralegal position, as well as a decrease of a half-time legal secretary, which Mark mentioned before, actually. That half-the-time position was helped, was moved to create the position for code enforcement secretary. Okay, jumping ahead to community development, there, this shows the movement of code compliance into community development from the police department. The increase in that division is obviously the addition of the secretary position. The 25% increase there for the building safety, planning, and zoning is directly related to movement of costs from the fire department, being that the community development now is going to take care of the building safety and fire safety inspections on businesses.
Lars?
Yes.
I know you're just giving us the numbers, so this comment is directed to Michael and the rest of the council. I think we need more code compliance officers. If we can possibly get it in the budget this year, I'd really like to see another position, full-time code compliance officer. You know, yesterday we had a discussion about temporary signs, and it came out that, well, we have a lot of violations and they're not being enforced. What we really need are more code enforcement officers, more people on the ground.
Councilwoman Woolcox, I guess I would open that up for discussion with the rest of council to see if they're interested in funding an additional body. We do that today, or we could do it tomorrow?
So we can revisit it tomorrow?
Yeah, if you want to.
Sleep on it overnight?
Yeah.
And also, while you're sleeping on it, let me give you one more thing to think about. Council can add a position anytime throughout the year that council wants to take action to do it. Obviously, as we adopt this budget, council will adopt a roster of employees, which sets employees. But if something happens mid-year and it's very obvious that we need code enforcement officers or more finance staff, just throwing it out there, council can come back at public meeting and add positions and move appropriation to make that happen. So even if it doesn't happen as part of this, it can happen, you know, as the need becomes more evident or whatever.
So we could move something from that unassigned general fund reserve?
Council, of course, has the ability to do whatever they want, although their finance director may point out that fund reserve is not a renewable revenue, it's a savings account.
Right.
And to start spending that on renewable expenses like personnel only leads you to have to eliminate those positions at some point.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a question. What I'd like to know is, what are we getting? Say we hire another code enforcement officer. I'd like to know what, you know, what the result of that person would be. I mean, if it's twice what we're getting now, it's still not going to be much. So I'd like to get a what-if kind of scenario where we actually are getting something for what we're paying, or getting something for what we're expecting.
Or another way to say is, maybe we have too much, too many codes for him to enforce.
We can definitely have that...
What a novel idea, Greg.
But before, you know, I say, yeah, let's hire another code enforcement officer, I'd like to know what we're getting.
We definitely could have that dialogue tomorrow, or we could do a presentation between now and the budget approval about adding a body. It's not...
Yeah, obviously, and again, anytime council wants to do it, if we can't, you know, rush it in and get the information council wants by tomorrow, which is pretty unlikely, or by the 15th, when we look at the tentative budget or the final budget, again, we can do it in July, we can do it in August, we can do it whenever we can get council what they want, to feel comfortable with what they want to add.
Maybe this is a thought that's rolled in with that moratorium discussion.
Well, we're not just talking about signs and other codes. Russell, talking about sober living homes.
Sure.
I mean, and that is, that's been an issue for us, and I don't think we want to slack up on that. So I don't know where we are with that, Michael, but I think that that's something that we should also, this is not just about enforcing sign...
Well, I think it would be good to have a dialogue with Mike Fleming about his workload and what he thinks an additional body would bring to the table.
Yeah, I just don't want to go, oh, everything's going to be better if we hire somebody.
Right.
I want to know what we're getting.
Yeah.
Well, I think the other thing, too, is if I heard you correctly, city manager, a while ago you said you were looking at a new model for code enforcement.
Yeah.
And I think until we've had a chance to see how that's working, you know, I think I would hold any kind of future additions to code enforcement in abeyance.
I'm hoping that the community development inspectors and the like can provide some needed backup and those types of things, so he'll have the additional capacity of being in a department that can provide some of that. But, I mean, all that can be factored into the determination, it should be.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you. Thank you for your questions, Steve, that, what are you getting for your money? But that you can say in any department, all right? So when we're looking at doing, as Michael was suggesting, that we sort of look at realigning our models for delivery service, what are we getting for what we're paying for? And it goes whether you're dealing with a fire department, dealing with the police department, dealing with community services, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all the way down the line. When you start talking, I agree with Greg in some instances, maybe we got too many codes if all you got's one code enforcement officer. On the other hand, if the codes are more important than some of what you pay for in your stuff, it's the same thing with personnel. How many personnel do you need to enforce what you want to enforce? You gotta, you gotta give them a working model, here's what we expect. I mean, I think that's where you're at, and that's why you're there.
That's correct.
All right?
Okay, I'll continue. The other thing that is increasing the cost in building safety is that they're implementing a new permitting software, the licensing fees for that, the annual licensing is increasing the budget slightly. That's a pretty exciting project. They're also budgeting for mobile devices for the inspectors so that they can, you know, do work on, in the field in that new software. The, if you look at the tax baseline here versus the general fund budget, go ahead.
Lars, just to get off topic a little bit, you can give council a real brief update of where we are with the business, what's the word I'm looking for? The business license...
Inspections?
No, the database that's going to be established that lists all the businesses that are licensed.
Yeah, so the, you know, per council direction, we are implementing a online directory, searchable directory of business licenses. We've explored some options of using our existing software, exposing the data to the public. Fortunately, that didn't seem to pan out, so we're designing a database in-house that's going to be on our website. Yeah, Mark's saying that the workshop on the 15th, he hopes to bring an update and show you what that looks like, 15th of June. The tax base percentage, basically, you'll see that 70% of the budget for this area is covered by fees. So they're basically 70% cost recovered, budgeting into FY18. The increase there in charges for services relates to the business license $40 fee for the business inspection. The, and then the inspections for vacation rentals and sober living homes, that's the increase there, $100,000. The special revenue fund line, that relates to their capital, which is the CDBG allocating of funds for the community. On their org chart, you'll see addition of three staff positions into the building safety, planning, and zoning area from the fire department. That increased the building inspectors up by two and the permit technician up by one from last year. Code compliance also up, you know, as mentioned many times, has, was given a secretary position.
I've got a question on this one.
Sure.
City manager, I see there's a significant restructuring of the org chart between last year and this year. Is that going to result in any reclassifications of personnel to higher positions?
I don't believe anybody's being reclassed. Tom, are you getting the audience somewhere? The change in duties and the appropriate funding associated with paying more, is it even taken care of?
Yeah, I believe we did put in for a reclassification of the one position for the community development manager, and what that does is it establishes a clear line of authority in the absence of the director and the additional responsibilities that that position will be taking on with respect to the overall development services function. But I believe that is the single position that we're looking at, a minor reclassification.
What's the financial impact of that? And how much money was that?
I don't remember that right offhand. I believe it was somewhere $4,000, something like that.
Yeah, I think it was $10,000 or less on the reclass. But there's also the grant coordinator position was reclassed, so there's two reclass requests. Was that? Yeah, so combining that, that equals a $10,000.
I could just add something with respect to the grants coordinator. That is a position that's funded by HUD, and what we've done in effect is given up a portion of our administrative specialist position in order to have a grant coordinator position. So she's really taking on the responsibilities of both positions, and we're seeing the reduction in general fund costs associated with using the federal funds to pay for the position.
Well, I see that the administrative specialist last year no longer exists, and that's now the grant coordinator administrative specialist, okay? And I know last year you had a planning manager and planners in one side, and you had chief building official and all the inspectors on the other side. Now you got that all in the one person. Obviously, we can't tell the city manager how to run the staff, but, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know how many more reclassifications we're going to be looking at, but, you know, that adds to our cost and it adds to, you know, the money that we're going to have to take out of the general fund, and I can tell you that I'm against any reclassification, actually.
If I could, Mayor, just to make sure my point was clear, we're actually seeing a savings in general fund costs as a result of using the HUD funds to pay for the grants coordinator position. So I think overall, we're going to see a savings of approximately $20,000 less as a result of the reclassifications, not an increase in cost.
Yeah, but we also know that CDBG funds are going down every year, you know? They're already talking about eliminating those in the president's budget, so I'm not sure if we're going to see a cost savings. I'd like to see the numbers on that, city manager.
We certainly can give you additional detail and talk about it some more.
Sure.
Mayor, could I ask a question? Thank you. What's the return on investment of all these changes that we're doing? You know, ultimately, for me, that's what's important, is that if we make a change, that ultimately it's going to produce something in the future.
Well, you know, I think we've already briefly discussed from a monetary standpoint, but it's going to enhance efficiency and effectiveness in the services that we provide to the development community. And one of the things we did earlier this year was take on some of the responsibilities of the public works department with respect to grading, drainage, environmental type of view and inspection services, and that's now a function that we do on a day-to-day basis as part of our building inspection processes. So in that, in that respect, we've enhanced our communication with our customers, we've reduced the number of problems that we've been experiencing. And if recall, this time last year, the council agreed to add an additional staff person to community development, and I believe Councilman LaZelle had specific questions and concerns about some of the problems we're experiencing at the time. I'm happy to say I think we've resolved those.
I would say, Tom, given two years ago, the concerned citizen calls to me about your department as an entirety has reduced next to none, so...
Yeah, I would agree to that. I think we've seen, and I think a lot of that's the customer service, the responsiveness to that area has definitely improved.
So this all fits in with our strategic plan?
Very much so. And in fact, this organizational chart, there's quite a bit that's happening that we haven't really expanded upon, but in the next very few weeks, we're going to be moving code enforcement into city hall, we're going to be moving the inspectors out of city hall, so we're in fact be incorporating code enforcement into everything that we do on a day-to-day basis. And so we'll be able to get support and resources from each of the different divisions within the department to help with any given issues or problems that they might be experiencing.
So, Tom, let me ask you a question as far as code enforcement's concerned. It seems to me that your people are out on the street...
Every day.
A lot, a lot more than a lot of people are. And, you know, could they basically be the eyes and ears of our code enforcement situation to some extent? You know, I know that when I drive down the street, I'll look at something and I'll go, oh, I need to call city hall about that, and then I get on with my business and totally forget about it. You know, I'm hoping that your folks can be a whole lot better than I am as far as getting back to, getting back to the city as far as code enforcement needs.
No, I think that's a very good point, and in fact, I don't know that it would just be limited to building inspectors. We currently do that with other departments. Say, for example, we have raw sewage in a drainage ditch off of Willow Lake Road, which is a situation we dealt with on several occasions over the last few years, and where we work closely with the environmental services out of Public Works and the county health department, code enforcement officer takes the lead in documenting that situation and working with the other departments and bringing about a corrective, corrective action and solution. Our inspection staff are pretty busy. I mean, the fact of it is, is they go out each and every day and have a full docket of inspections. It's not... It's not like we have a day where we don't have any inspections.
Right.
And typically, it's somewhere between 50 and 20 stops.
Sure.
Per inspector, per day. That's not to say that precludes the possibility of them identifying potential code violations and making the compliance officer aware of those.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protiem.
Thank you very much. I liked the dialogue a lot. Thank you, Steve, for making some of your comments there. And hopefully, Mr. Manager, you're listening to some of the conceptual changes for, for new models for delivery of service. You know, there's nothing to prohibit police officers or firemen or anything else. I mean, they're around town all day long, too, from commenting on potholes and issues that they, they run across. I mean, that's their job. I mean, that's part of their job. I mean, I realize there's other things that take priority over this, this, or this, but I mean, when you see somebody riding a bicycle out there doing their street patrol, they, they also see all the garbage that's around. They see some of what's going on, just like Shiska was pointing out there. Your personnel are on the street on a daily basis, and there's nothing wrong with your personnel relating to some of the other folks within the city. And that's some of what Mr. Michael there is trying to get a grip on.
I agree, Jim, and you want to structure your organization so you're taking full advantage of as much capacity as you have.
Without increasing the cost. And that goes back to what the mayor was saying. What is there that we can do to deliver a higher quality, better service model to the citizens of Prescott without increasing the cost and using the personnel that we have? So I, I think I heard that across the board here at some point. So just sharing away, I hope you're, you're taking, because as this budget goes forward, do we really need this, this, and this? If we've got personnel right on the street that can do that job? Maybe, maybe there's some direction that needs to be given from management, whether it be management within the structure, you know, your community development manager, et cetera. Hey, guys, this is part of your job.
It has been, and it needs, and we can continue to reiterate it.
Thank you.
I think we really need to look at what's involved in code enforcement. If your inspectors are out in the field and they see a violation, they can report it, but then where does it go? And how is it handled? It takes time and a, a real person to send a letter or go visit the person who's in violation and resolve the complaint. And that's what Mike Fleming does. So even if your inspectors are reporting more, that's one part of the problem. But then we need to talk about additional personnel to resolve code violations.
Depends on if they're public health and safety type codes or if they're just, as Mr. Lozelle was pointing out, superfluous codes that may not have essential function to public health and safety, but something else.
Okay, I think we're getting short on time. We probably need to move on, and if anybody needs to take a break, just take a break.
Just to clarify your question on reclassification, we've talked about the two, there weren't a lot this year. We've talked about those two. We've talked about one earlier, which was the movement of the secretary out of the city clerk back to the city manager department and changing that to an executive assistant that was making that a full-time position. And then there were only other, two others that were brought forward, which we will talk about when we get to the fire department.
Was that a reclassification?
Of moving that position. It was a movement of a position and a reclassification because of additional duties.
That's a big job.
The next department we'll discuss is the library. You'll see it's a very flat budget. The main increase I wanted to point out, or decrease, sorry, in other services and charges, that relates to a maintenance project that had ongoing this current year, which is replacing their lights with LED fixtures instead of the fluorescent.
I have a question, because it was on my notes here on the detail that was given us. The library has a, I want to say, janitorial maintenance? They have their own line on that? I know they have a janitorial, custodial.
Yeah, they do have an employee doing that.
Why isn't that rolled into the, the city as a whole? Because the city has a custodial department, correct?
That's correct. So, so the facility's internal fund provides three different services, and so the library has opted out of the janitorial part of it. But they do get the utilities and general ma, big project maintenance.
I mean, in the big picture, is it, is it more efficient that way? I, I don't know.
Just, just some history on that. We, we have experimented with that over the years and moving that person into the facility's janitorial citywide. And I'm not sure if facilities are here, but with the, with the traffic count, the gate counts, and the flow that the library has, the janitorial function is really sufficient to have somebody assigned there to take care of that. So like I said, we have experimented with that in past where they were part of that portion of facilities, as Lars indicated, but this really has worked more effectively for them.
Okay.
Lars, I have a question about the funding sources, charges for services. It went down 45%.
Yeah, that's, what happened was in FY17, they projected, estimated what renting the meeting rooms would bring in. Well, that didn't come to fruition, so they revised the projection down quite a bit.
I think the problem there was that there were many groups that were meeting in those, in those rooms without charge before, and they're not membership clubs that deal with money. They're just groups of people that get together or book meetings or lectures, and they couldn't come up with the money.
Right.
So we were impeding the use of the library as a forum for the right to association under the Constitution.
Right.
I think we ought to just, I think we ought to just get rid of charges for renting rooms in the library. It's such a minimal amount of money.
I, I have to go back to my own experience, Gene. There is cost involved when you give a room, when you're giving it. There's, there's conditioning the room, whether it's heating or cooling it, there's cleaning it, there's wear and tear on the fixtures, and there's a cost attributed to that.
Well, that's all built into the cost of using the library in general. It costs to run the rest of the library, and the carpets wear out, and you have to put the lights on there anyway, and the air conditioner on anyway. I just don't think that it's a good policy to be charging for using rooms in the library, which is supposed to be a free library and available to the entire public.
I see both sides of that argument. Number one, I don't think anybody's telling the public they can't assemble at the library. I would hate to think we would tell people that you can't assemble at the library or anyplace else that the city of Prescott's in charge of. On the other hand, I don't think it's right to assume that we're going to provide a maintenance for their assembly. I agree with Greg on that, that if somebody comes in and there's, the trash has got to be emptied, the things have got to be cleaned, somebody's going to pay for that, hopefully not the people that aren't using the library services. So I, I see both sides of that argument.
Do we charge for Centennial?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
We do. I mean, again, if this is something you want to have further dialogue about, we can make note of these things and bring them back to you guys to talk about it.
I mean, I'm, I'm not going to beat this one down. I just wanted to make that point. And I agree with, to some extent with you, that the library is open, but there are amenities that, there's nothing in the, the free library handbook that says we've got to have rooms. I mean, we could have one room with a bunch of books in it, but we chose to have other rooms in it, so. I just wanted to bring that to light, that I, I don't think removing that charge fully would be the answer, but I think there's, it offsets it in some way.
So I think this is good dialogue, and like Michael said, it could come back at a future ta, future date for action.
I think we should, well, of course, this is up to the library staff and Michael, right?
Well, it's a policy decision that you guys can make about whether or not you want to waive fees. I mean, and we'll live with the consequence.
I know, we used to, I, I'm with a group that used to meet more often there, and we don't meet there now because we can go other places that we don't. And so I think there's probably less use at the library because of it, that's for sure.
And that's an impact you guys probably weren't expecting, and now that it's become a reality, revisiting it and talking about it is probably a good idea. So we could definitely talk about.
Or maybe even at the amounts.
Yeah, I mean, you could, we could bring the fee schedule and talk about, if you don't go all the way to free usage, is there a reduced amount that makes sense?
So to move on, the tax base as a percentage of their general fund budget, they get about 25% funding through program revenues. The special revenue fund is, is a donation fund, which is basically the Friends of the Library, supporting the library, $40,000. The personnel stays exactly the same from last year, so there's nothing to point out here. Now we're into the police department.
Just for a second, go back, I was out of the room, so maybe I missed it.
Oh, sure.
Twenty-one point five, we have in FY18, those are full-time or part-time equivalents. That doesn't count any of the volunteers. How many volunteers do we have at the library, by, by the way?
I think that'd be, yeah, library staff will address that.
Mayor, council, we have approximately 150 volunteers at the library that represent about seven FTEs in total hours worked.
Okay, great, appreciate.
Okay, so into the police department. The biggest changes here obviously relate to the increase in the PSPRS contribution. Police administration, though, went, increased because of a change in the way the deputy police chief was being charged, it was 40% into the regional communications department. Now it's been moved to 100% in the police department, so that increased that slightly. The support bureau went down as a result of code compliance moving out, as well as they moved three positions from support into operations. And I think that can be discussed a little bit more detailed by the chief a little later. Capital, that will also be detailed slightly later. The tax base increase to the general funds going up 6%. That's about $700,000, alluding to the PSPRS as well as the additional training and equipment that they needed or requesting. Special revenue funds relate to donations and grants that help fund the police department. We'll talk briefly about the regional communications, and then after this, the police chief has a, some slides he'll present, but the regional communications is also a pretty flat budget. There's an increase in other services and charges relating to the, the new software that is being implemented. The tax base versus charges for services, the city of Prescott portion of the regional communications is about 49%. 51% is covered by partners, and that is set by contract based on calls for service. That may change throughout the year, but we've seen it stay pretty similar around 49% to city of Prescott. The, the charges for services, yeah, that's the partner's share. The tax base part, though, is, is included in the police and fires budgets. It's somewhat of a, of a double accounting, but that is a internal cost allocation to the police and fire department. Then the, the police department's org chart, their.
Could we go back to the other charts for a moment?
Yes.
I see that there's a pretty significant increase in capital. What was that for, again?
That's the replacement of the public safety or the CAD, computer aided design software.
At the PRCC?
Yeah, yep. As well as a recording system. So the personnel changes, the decrease of 1.1 is, has been discussed. The net effect is 1.1, but it's essentially the, the code enforcement, one position moving out to community development, actually, one and a half, sorry, and then the 40% coming back into the police department from regional communications. So the net effect is 1.1. The next section of this presentation will be by Chief Black.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about the police department. We're not going to cover every aspect of what we do, but try and hit some of the more significant operational outcomes that the 83 FTEs and 41 volunteers of the police department perform on a day-to-day basis. As I said, I'm not going to go through every function of the police department, but really focus on the two primary bureaus, the first being the operations bureau. Within the, it's led by a patrol lieutenant, currently Lieutenant Gill. He will be retiring later this year, actually, in about a month and a half. So he will be replaced by Jason Small, who will be promoted to lieutenant. The patrol function is the, the vast majority of the FTEs within this bureau, providing 24/7 response to calls for service as well as proactive police activity. The staffing level there, as you can see, five sergeants, 41 officers, and an absolutely essential half-time administrative support person that kind of puts it all together for scheduling and staffing. This comprises five patrol teams that do provide that 24/7, 365 coverage of first responders. That gives us six or seven authorized staffing per patrol team. And our minimum staffing, so with training or time off, vacation, those sorts of things, minimum staffing is five per team. Traffic safety, we have a sergeant and four officers and one parking control civilian officer.
I'm sorry. Chief, could you say that one more time? Your traffic is?
Traffic is one sergeant and four officers and one parking control civilian employee.
All right.
So the traffic safety section is responsible for responding to collisions and doing those investigations, primarily the, the injury collisions that might require a little bit more investigation. They also do pro, a lot of proactive work in terms of enforcement in high travel areas, high violation or traffic safety areas where we do see a lot of crashes. They're also very involved in the proactive enforcement, that a lot of it is funded through the governor's office of highway safety and grants provided therein. And then they do the education component for, for traffic education being, traffic safety being a three-pronged approach of engineering, which is, is not in the police department, but we work closely with Ian, enforcement and education.
And Mayor, can I ask a question? So, Chief, I get people saying, you know, we just, we just don't stop this, people from speeding, we don't, I mean, I get more complaints about that probably than anything else, is that people drive too fast, they fly through lights, and of course, you know, and you always go, we're the police.
Yeah.
And I just want to, do you feel that we're understaffed in this area?
We have, over the last couple of years, reduced the staffing level by two. So there are fewer officers in this dedicated function. However, this isn't where all of the traffic enforcement occurs. We do have patrol officers that are out there very visibly, having that deterrent effect by being in an area where we do have high speeding violations or traffic controls violations. So, but do, do we need to do more in this area? Absolutely. And that is probably the greatest complaint that I get.
Okay.
From, from people in the community, whether it's in residential areas or on the arterials.
Mayor Protiem has a question.
Thank you. Well, actually, I appreciate Billy's logic and what he was talking about. And I'm looking at the, the deal here with the amount of calls that we have. And here again, it's a matter of priorities. And when you go to the budget, and that's why you're here, Michael, when we go to the budget and we listen to public health and safety issues, and we look at how many dollars we have to work with, all right, in fact, the matter still comes back to what's most important. Do we want our streets? Do we want our streets not only clean but safe? Do we want our property safe? And how much money do we have to keep them safe as compared to how much money do I have for some of the so-called quality of life issues? And you can't have it all when you're working on a fixed budget. So, my priorities have never changed. I'm a public safety-first kind of guy. And if we need more cops, we need more cops. It's just that simple.
Mayor, I'd like to say something. If that could. Go ahead. You know, chief, one of the problems we run into is that you could have 100 officers out there, and you wouldn't catch every speeder.
That's true.
And so, we have to put things in perspective and say, what is the best possible outcome? Rather than, you know, we need more people. I mean, if you need more people, then I want to know the outcome of the more people.
Very good point, Councilman Shishka. And what I touch on in virtually every community presentation I am able to do is that traffic safety is voluntary compliance with what the laws are. The laws are not a secret, and we do a lot to educate people on what the speed limits are. And, you know, I don't think it's a mystery that red means stop and yellow means slow down. So, if we could encourage more voluntary compliance with traffic safety, then we would have fewer crashes, we would have safer streets, and we would have fewer complaints about how it is to drive on the streets in Prescott. So, enforcement is not the only answer here. I really do encourage the public to follow the traffic safety laws. They're not recommendations, they are laws.
Enforcement might not be the only answer here. But on the other hand, if the outcome that we're trying to achieve, as Mr. Shishka's talking about, is to have this, this, or this, if we don't have the personnel on hand trying to accomplish that outcome, that's a different issue. And that's what we're here to discuss when we talk about $180 million budget. What's appropriate in that budget for this as compared to this? And that's what we're here for. So, I need to hear from not only the chief of the fire department, the chief of the police department, and division heads. And then it's up to us, sitting up here, policymakers, to define what our priorities are.
No, I don't have anything to add. I can tell you, within existing staffing levels, the chief is looking at doing some ratcheting up of traffic enforcement over a finite period of time to bring attention to the issue.
That's correct.
Over the summer.
Education.
Yeah, and actually, enforcement element over a finite period of time that maybe more folks are assigned for this task for a week or two to bring attention and actually stroke tickets if you have to.
And I understand that, Michael, but traffic's not the only issue that the police department's got to deal with. You got a bunch of dopeheads here. You got a whole bunch of stuff going on, okay, and the cops got to try and handle it all.
You're right about that, and you got to prioritize.
So, moving on to community services, there's actually an error in the number here. We have one sergeant and two officers, which includes the school resource officer. These are staff that's very well-known to you, Ben Scott, Brandon Gerlock, and Bill Wolf as the SRO. We have supported the school district in an application for grant funding for two SROs, which would fund Bill's position at Prescott High School as well as a second position at Mile High Middle School. Don't know the outcome of that. We probably won't know until after this budget is adopted.
Is that the Arizona Community Foundation or...?
No.
Okay.
No, that's through the state, a school safety grant through the state. So, what this leaves us with, and we've talked about it briefly in the past, our ability to continue to assign an officer solely to one school out of our general fund, out of our 83 FTEs. And our feeling is that we cannot. So, if we do not receive those grant funds, what my recommendation is, working with the city manager, is that we pull Bill Wolf out of the high school, but keep him in community services to be a liaison to all of the campuses. Certainly, a diminished level of service to the high school in particular and probably across all of those, but given the limited staffing that we have and the reality that I can't find anyone that has a general fund, city-funded, school resource officer, dedicated. Most of it is a shared funding or a grant-funded.
Well, chief, I appreciate you getting on this because we talked a lot about this last year during the budgetary process, so that's good, and we'll hope for the grant.
Yeah.
If not, then that's really all we can do. Great.
And again, school safety is a very high priority. Any immediate need is going to be answered by patrol officers responding to that call for service. But it's that relationship and that day-to-day and those other problem-solving approaches that can be accomplished with a dedicated person who knows the staff, who can get into those issues and hopefully resolve things before they become more protracted. So, these are... this is our bike squad, essentially. They serve primarily the downtown, also in the park system. And this is the area that Mr. Lamar asked me to enhance. We will be enhancing it through supplementing this team. Our immediate focus is through the summer and our high tourism period of time and have more officers on bikes, more officers on foot. And that will be pulling from existing resources and frankly funded through overtime dollars so that we can have... meet the high-demand times, have a presence in the downtown, deal with any of the vagrancy issues, any of the concerns that the business owners have, and just have a very positive presence and do that kind of outreach. That really means a lot, not only to our residents, but to our visitors that come in to visit Prescott and enjoy all of the amenities that downtown has to offer.
Chief, I got a quick question. Going back to the community services. I don't know. You've talked to Joe Howard quite a bit, city manager.
I did.
And I know I have, and I know he's very appreciative of the RSOs. Have we talked to him at all about, you know, sharing the cost?
On multiple occasions, I've had the dialogues with Joe. I know the chief has. And I think Joe is supportive of the concept. He hasn't been able to get the school board to allocate the funds to pay for the SRO.
They're kind of in the same situation we are.
They are. They're making choices.
But we've had multiple conversations, and he understands that a shared financial relationship is probably where this needs to land, is hoping.
Okay. Mayor Protim?
Thank you very much. Here again, I liken this very much to this 4-4-3 issue. Simply because this doesn't work or that doesn't work doesn't mean it goes away. I just heard we need somebody in the schools. Well, if I'm not far off base, a lot of our problems with drug abuse and trafficking and all this other stuff emanates at the school grounds. So, here again, it's a priority issue when we sit at the budget and we're trying to figure out how to best use our economic resources. I'm just encouraging my council to hear what your police chief is presenting. And, you know, chief, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
But if you need personnel to do the job differently, we need to know that.
Thank you.
Councilman Shishka?
Yeah, chief, you know, you said overtime when you talked about community services. My concern is that it sounds great. I mean, time and a half, look at all the money you're going to make. But the truth of the matter is, is that these people want to spend time with their families, too. And they're not all about spending as many hours as possible out on the street. So, how does that fit in with community servicing?
So, we cast a net. And what I've actually seen occur is, because we have been using overtime to fill vacancies on patrol squads, because we have three recruits in the academy that will graduate tomorrow, as a matter of fact. Prior to that, we had seven that had to go through field training, so they weren't... It takes a while to get an officer hired, trained at the academy, and trained in the field. So, we did have those gaps that we filled through overtime, and yes, that was a strain. And what I saw was fewer and fewer off-duty jobs being accepted by officers and more and more of this kind of staffing. So, we'll cast a net, and it's not limited to those assigned in the operations bureau. It will be potentially detectives. And so, if... we're hoping to get probably five additional people that will fill some of these shifts. And we're not trying to do anything beyond what we believe is necessary, so the hours will be aligned with when we think that the demand is there or the initial... or the additional presence of officers in the downtown area is going to have the greatest effect.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Well, my question is similar. How long can we sustain using overtime, looking ahead to next year? Is this sustainable, even one more year?
This will be a get-through-the-summer, end of August into September, school year begins, and assess. So, that is really what Mr. Lamar had asked me to do, is let's build it up, see our effects. We're going to have some benchmarks and some metrics that we look at to see if we do... I would love to do a survey to see, you know, how the community and how the business community feels with this additional presence. So, it's not necessarily going to translate to a reduction in crime or more tickets or any of those sorts of things. But really, it's community policing is about partnership and working in collaboration with the community on issues of concern to them, whether that is a crime issue, a public safety or a public disorder issue, whatever that is. That's what we need to resolve, and that's what we need to address for these stakeholders. So, to answer your question, we're looking through the end of August, and then we're going to reassess.
Okay. We should keep in mind, too, that there are more and more houses being built north of the Dells occupied. We're going to need more patrol in that area because there are people who live there.
Thank you.
For planning.
Councilwoman Or.
Yeah, and you know, chief, I spoke to a police officer who said he had over 40 hours of overtime last month. That's a lot of overtime, and that's a lot on a person. I mean, so it's not just like, you know, like Steve says, they want time with their families, too. And I know it's by... is it by choice that they get there overtime and they are...
Absolutely. It's voluntary.
Right. And... but that's got to be tough on safety, too, so we have to keep their safety in mind. Because when they're tired and they're in these situations that they need to perform, we have to think about that.
Yeah, no question.
Yeah.
Question I have is, the crime prevention station officers, do they wear a uniform at all?
Okay, so we're moving on to crime prevention, and these are two civilians. We call them officers. They're retired officers. The two civilians that are available through the business week, so Monday through Friday, nine... eight to five, I believe. So, they're available for walk-in traffic to take calls that don't need an officer response. They do not wear a uniform. They... but they're highly qualified for the work that they're doing, and they're taking late reports or answering inquiries about a report that was previously taken. This is proving to be very effective in relieving patrol from either having to come back into the station to meet with the citizen that has a concern or pulling those calls off so that the patrol officer doesn't have to go to a location.
Okay. Well, I guess the RSO, we prefer that person to be uniformed.
An SRO is typically a sworn police officer in full uniform.
It wouldn't be appropriate to take somebody that's... We consider for the crime prevention to put them in the school.
You know, we'd really have to talk to Joe Howard to see if that would meet their needs. We're not probably talking about somebody that... I mean, retired officers certainly could fill that need, but where that would fit in terms of what kind of a classification, what kind of uniform and all of that, I don't see that really fulfilling the need as an SRO, as a sworn police officer would.
I agree with you. I was just asking the question.
On the crime prevention station officer, Murray's one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I dealt with him the other day. That's a good system. And I just needed to go in and fill some more out on a prior case, and he helped immensely.
Yeah, I think it is definitely an advancement of your customer service.
Yes.
Goal. We also have online reporting, which probably hasn't turned out to be as successful as we had hoped because people like to talk to people. People like to see an officer or somebody who is an official of the police department to help them work through the issue.
Right.
We also have animal control within the operations division. There is one supervisor and one animal control officer. They do a lot of what you might see a code enforcement officer doing because they're resolving issues in a neighborhood related to a stray animal, a nuisance sort of thing with a barking dog or things of that matter. And then finally, I should not say finally, we have a sergeant that provides operational support to a lot of these other functions. Also does all of our special event planning, supervises the citizens on patrol, which are absolutely invaluable to all of this because they will arrive on scene in a collision and relieve an officer from a traffic control spot until those... the vehicles can be cleared. So, currently, Jeff Hemphill serves this role. He is going to be moving to investigations, and we will have a new sergeant in this role. Jeff also is our sole canine officer today. Hercules will likely retire in the near future. We have identified an additional canine officer who will work under this supervisor. And we have a new dog currently in training. And she's training with her new partner, and it is a single-purpose dog. It will be attached... that team will be attached to patrol so it's not as if we took a patrol officer completely away and had them working elsewhere. Will be in uniform, will work as a team and provide support to patrol as well as being the drug detection canine for the Prescott Police Department.
Excuse me, mayor, I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Chief, are we going to have any canine presence downtown?
Part of the role of Officer Bray and his yet-to-be-announced the name of his partner. We do expect that they will be spending time in the Courtyard, Courthouse Plaza area on walking downtown. Part of that is, you know, the community services, that outreach that is just absolutely invaluable, and it does serve a purpose. You know, the dog works. The dog's always working, so...
Thank you.
So, talking about some metrics, and these are 26 numbers. The operations bureau primarily, because they are the first responders on calls for service, handled 24,136 calls for service. In addition to that, initiated 15,042 other activities. Now, 14,000 of that was traffic contacts that resulted in a citation, a warning, or a repair order. And we had 484 DUI arrests last year. And animal control handled 552 incidents and cited 123.
Statistically, 484 DUI arrests in a community this size, is that standard?
I think that that is probably low. Again, that's our traffic enforcement squad, but also our patrol officers that view violations and end up in a DUI arrest. I would have to compare that to years prior. Traffic flow and population, probably those are factors. And, you know, but we obviously educate a lot on this matter, that funding alternatives. So, lower arrests isn't necessarily a bad thing. I do think that we had probably less coverage and more patrol officers assigned to calls, so probably a little bit less of that proactive sort of activity in terms of arrests and DUI. But we really do try and encourage people to not drink and drive. And so, when you see lower arrests, it doesn't necessarily mean a lower level of safety.
Yeah, I understand that DUI is more than just drink and drive, though. So, listening, you guys busted one this morning for dope, so...
Yeah.
Got one question on the animal control handling. Have you seen, since we passed the ordinance on feeding... not feeding wild animals and gaming fish now can respond to those, has that reduced any of your animal control calls at all?
I'd have to follow up with you on that question. I'm not aware if we've seen an impact. I'm not, I'm not aware if we've seen an impact or not.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, on to Support Bureau. I don't know why that's red. Is that just a marker? Thank you. Our Support Bureau is also led by a lieutenant. This is Lieutenant John Brambilla. Within this bureau is our Investigations function, led by a sergeant and five detectives. We also have a detective that is assigned to the Partners Against Narcotics Trafficking, the Regional Task Force that is, is primarily involved in, in higher-level drug interdiction. We also have one administrative support civilian that, that serves this bureau, or this, this function. The, underneath the Investigations function is the property evidence. We do have two property evidence technicians. This is as a result of a reclassification that we requested in years past. This was driven down to one property evidence technician, which is seriously understaffed for the responsibility, as well as the, the integrity of the unit requires more than one individual. Looking at our, the agency to the east of us, they have three. So we, what we were forced to do was take a records clerk, a records technician, and reclassify that position to property evidence, so that is now full. This was also a customer service issue. A lot of people come in to retrieve property that has been either somehow come into control of the police department, and we were not able to provide full service in that area. Now we are during business hours during the week. A records section is a very vital section of the police department, staffed by one supervisor and now three clerks. I'm actively looking for a volunteer to help supplement this, this area. But they are responsible for all of the documents for the police department, the income and the outgoing. And they are the customer service superstars of the police department. Anybody that comes in to the police department is going to be greeted by one of our wonderful staff there. We do have one administrative specialist. This is a civilian position responsible for all of our grant application, grant management, handles all of the facility responsibilities and our security issues, so issuing access cards, all of that sort of thing. That's one. And she also is our liaison with ACTIC and a terrorism liaison officer, and, and manages all of that information for us and getting it into officers within the department. We have one Training and Recruitment, Training and Recruitment PIO officer. This is a change in the past. This was a half-time civilian position that simply was not sufficient to meet the demand. Training records are absolutely essential. I'm sure that Mr. Pedraki would agree in terms of not only provide, performing the training, but keeping the records of the training so that we can maybe defend our actions. Also in the recruitment and hiring function, it's, it's absolutely essential to have a sworn presence in that area. So we have one officer, this is Dave Fuller. We also have a position that is paid for by the college, and this is the NARDA class sergeant. Any questions? That's okay. If they don't mind the red dot, I don't mind the red dot. Okay. So this Support Bureau, just some outcomes in 2016, 375 cases were investigated by detectives. This is a little bit misleading because one case is not identical to the next. So, you know, cases can be extremely complicated. It may involve multiple search warrants, but this unit alone, the five detectives and one officer, serves 70, or I'm sorry, 90 search warrants. 7,000 items of property were processed in or released out, and the records section handled, managed 39,000 departmental reports. And throughout the course of 2016, 25 civilian and sworn employees were hired.
I've got a quick question. I watch, look at the blotter that we have in the paper, and very, very seldom do I ever see anything that is drug-related. I'm not sure why that is. The Pant officer we have, he works at the county level?
Yes, he's under the supervision of the task force, which is a county lieutenant.
So if he's handling anything that's related to, to drugs, is that basically going on the county blotter?
I don't believe that Pant actually reports through the courier. And, and other than, you know, there are significant seizures or a search warrant that might result in a number of arrests, I get those reports and see how many cases are, are handled either in or through Prescott. So I'm satisfied that we are getting a return on, on the investment of one FTE to that, to that effort.
Well, I have quite a few people that come up to me and say they read the blotter and they never see anything on drug rehab or, you know, drug issues, and so I don't know how to answer them. I guess we're making those. I don't know if, do we handle anything related to overdose cases and things of that nature? Do we normally investigate those?
We, we absolutely do, and, and the task force also will assist particularly if it's an opioid overdose because we do want to track that back and get as much intelligence as we can about those cases.
So that would be, probably be under the 375 case and investigate about?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I'm going to talk briefly about PRCC. It is a regional communication center. You can see the agencies that we serve on the staffing level. This is a change also. The director is now a Prescott Police Department lieutenant. We had identified the, the need among the partners to have a director on site. When we weren't able to fill that, we realized that one alternate way to accomplish this mission is to select a lieutenant, and that's Lieutenant Kevin Perlak, who's been in PRCC since late last year. We have a business manager, four supervisors. This again is a 24/7, 365 operation, handling 205, almost 206,000 inbound calls. So that's, the majority of those, the vast majority of those are either through the 911 system or the emergency seven-digit line. So that's significant workload that they handle, and they handle extremely well. When you break down the calls that were entered, over 47,000 were police, 19 and a half thousand were fire, and 16,000 were EMS. Prescott breaks down, you can see the police department, as I said earlier, 24,136 calls for service. They also have a role in handling the calls when the self-initiated activity takes place, whether it's a business contact, a traffic stop, a field contact, whatever it is, they also have a role in that. And then the fire department, 8,345 calls. These are their metrics. Their goal is 100% of the time to answer 911 calls within 10 seconds, and 100% of the time to answer those other calls coming in within 10 seconds. You can see their, their results, and they're always striving to do better. They have also struggled with maintaining staffing levels, and it's not quite as involved, the training process in some ways is more involved than a police officer because of all of the technology. But they, we, we are constantly looking for high-quality employees to serve in this role of a, of a communications specialist.
Couple of questions. Do you think any of our partners are going to be pulling out of our PRCC? Because I was talking to a councilperson at PV, and they thought that Central Arizona was going to establish its own PRCC. Have you heard anything about that?
I have not heard anything other than maybe some of the same kind of what-if sorts of, but nothing tangible.
More what if than rather they are going to do it?
Yeah.
Mayor, talk a little bit about that. The upfront capital costs associated with establishing your own 911 center are pretty substantial, so.
Okay. Well, I figured it was.
They can bandy about the idea, but it's not a cheap endeavor to take on on your own.
I would think we'd be more cost-effective for them. What is your turnover in the PRCC on an annual basis?
Good question. I, I believe we typically have three to five vacancies that we're working to fill, and then in the various forms of, of training. So again, when we hire somebody, there's a, a very dedicated period of time necessary to get them qualified to sit on their own, and, and frankly, we lose people before they reach that point.
I think you have some people that actually go through training and never actually make it through.
That's true.
They decide that they aren't going to have anything.
Yeah, and, and some people believe that they can, and they just, they realize they don't have the skill set or the desire to, to build that skill. So it's a very, very challenging position, and nationally, this, this rate of vacancy is, is very high.
Yeah. Counselor Will Minore?
Yes, Chief, I spent two days over there, and, and one of the days was with a training class. It was amazing to see what they, what they have to know, and just that quick decision and Gail, I think Gail's last name, sorry, but it doesn't matter. She does amazing job as far as the training. But, and one of the gentlemen that they had trained, they'd gone, I think it was like weeks and weeks and weeks, and I think he was like quit before he got on. And then she says, sometimes they'll come on and they quit within, the mayor said, within a week, they'll just go, this is too much stress. It's an extremely stressful job.
Yeah. And keep in mind, they, you know, they work holidays, they work weekends, they work...
And they work 12-hour shifts.
They work 12-hour shifts, so they're working midnight shifts.
I mean, it's focused 12 hours.
It is, it is. So, you know, high demand, and, you know, I think we are comparable to the, to the region in, in what we, what we pay our folks. But it, it takes a very unique person to be attracted to this work and then committed to it.
Got some really good staff over there, though.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on. I think we're moving on, yeah. Really can't talk about what the police department does without talking about one of the ways that we're measured, which is crime data. So this is 2016, and this is calendar year 2016. So UCR Part One, Uniform Crime Reporting, which is what we, as all police agencies report to the FBI, including homicide, aggravated assault, sexual assault, robbery, theft, auto theft, and arson. We had a total of 1,080 crimes in that category, in those categories for 2016. This reflects a 10% reduction. Much of that is because in 2015, we had four homicides, in 2016, we had none. But we also had reduction in sexual assault, theft, and auto theft. The Part Two is the, the category of crime that includes assaults, so not at a felony level, but a misdemeanor level typically, narcotics, fraud, vandalism, DUI, and other. Total of 3,024 crimes in this area, which is an 8% reduction. I would say that the 8% reduction in this area is not necessarily reflective of good policing because some of those areas, like narcotics enforcement and DUI, are based on proactive efforts. So if that number goes down, then that means we are able to do less in this area. Could mean that there's less crime in narcotics. I think we know that that is not true. DUI possibly, but it, I think it goes to our availability to do that proactive work that is so important to safety in the community.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. I feel good, Chief, that you're standing in front of us, telling us that we have a 10% reduction in homicides, aggravated assault, sexual assault, robbery, theft, auto theft, blah, blah, blah. And then, of course, narcotics and fraud. We got a 8% reduction, but gosh, you know, when you think about this, we had a 11, almost 1,100 of number one, and we had over 3,000 in number two. Wow.
That's correct, because each one of those represents a victim, somebody in our community that suffered harm by somebody else. So yes, I, I don't, I, I, you know, I appreciate that a 10% reduction means that there's about 100 fewer victims, but that's not where we want to be.
Yeah, I just, wow. And you know, we, we talk about priorities, we talk about different things, we talk about individual behavior and all kinds of different things, and that gets back to, are we appropriating our highest and best use of what we have to use? And it just gnaws on me to see 4,000 nasty things happen in the community I serve, and I just don't know whether or not we're appropriately allocating the best to the highest use that we can, you know? And I just share in a way, it's a concern.
Thank you.
I've got a, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we, you wrap up your thing, Chief, I just want to personally thank you. You're coming up on a year now.
Yeah.
And I just want to thank you for choosing our community to come here. You, and, and along with a lot of other hires I have been involved in, I'm glad you came here, and I appreciate everything, you, your leadership to the department, and your entire department and staff. I deal with them weekly, sometimes more than once, and they are nothing but professional and, and helpful.
Thank you, and I think all of you know how thrilled I am to be here. I'm still referred to as the new chief. I don't feel new. I feel very, very entrenched in this community.
You're still the superstar.
And I'm, I'm absolutely thrilled to be here. And we can't say enough about the, the support that we get from the community and, and from the council. You know, specifically, I can tell you, when I arrived here, there was so much concern about the class and compensation, and was it really going to happen? And then as we started into this year, is it going to happen again? And, and just that endorsement that you have made into not only the police department, but all city employees is just, it just means so much. And that is key to retention. That's key to attracting new employees. But I don't want to have to fill vacancies because somebody went down the street, or somebody went down the hill to the valley. I want to retain people, and that's my goal since the day I arrived, that I want to create the, the environment where people can do their best work, that they have the tools that they need, the training they deserve, and the leadership that will inspire them to do great things.
I've got a question. Obviously, on, during our tourist season on the weekends, we get, you know, quite an influx of folks coming into town. How has that impacted your ability to do the policing function? Do you put a lot, extra, extra people on overtime to help meet the need, or?
So if it's a very specific event that's occurring, yes, there may be additional staff associated at, for, to staff that event, and that's through the Special Events Planning Section, what is needed, if there's a beer garden, those sorts of things. We're also using overtime, as I mentioned earlier, to create that presence outside of that, in addition to that. And then we also make sure that we have our staffing levels in patrol as we need to so that we can, we can respond should there be a, a significant event, a call for service that requires multiple unit response, that we have enough people to do that.
Well, I was talking to a mayor in the Midwest, and apparently what they do is they have people that are under the state retirement system or not under the public safety retirement system. They're not sworn officers, but they wear uniforms, they do not carry a weapon, they do have a radio. And what they do is, where you want to have increased presence, they're there and they're reporting, and they, you know, they, they'll answer questions and things of that nature. Have we looked at anything like that?
We have, Mayor. In fact, the chief has talked about what you, what the term is, the ambassador program.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Debbie, do you want to allude to what that?
Yeah, this is something I would, I would really like to introduce, where it is an employee, whether it's somebody that serves through the Downtown Partnership, or the Police Department, or some variation therein, that is basically eyes and ears, you know, not a uniform officer, not a security function, but certainly can report and, and provide information should, you know, a criminal event be, be occurring, or it's really just a matter of knowing who's down there, and if somebody needs to be encouraged to move along, that sort of thing. And I think that presence has proven to be very, very effective in other downtown areas, certainly other downtown areas that I've served in. And so I think that that would be a very good addition to what we can provide. Not, and, you know, I don't want to think just downtown as, you know, as the Courthouse Plaza area, you know? Look at the skate park, look at the, the parks and the trail system. I think that there's a, a great opportunity there to have a presence that's not necessarily a sworn police officer.
But these people would be paid, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't talking about volunteers again.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Chief?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
City manager, where do you think we are right now?
Mark, how close to we got the fire department's presentation and then?
Yeah, we got about 20 more slides that we could do today. I mean, I mean, we could power through and do it now. We could stop after fire, maybe start tomorrow with recreation... tomorrow with recreation, which would finish up this presentation, then get into public safety, I mean into public works.
You know, Mr. Mayor, if I, I really don't want to power through anything.
I'm in agreement with you, I got to be someplace at 1 o'clock and I need to.
It doesn't do justification of those departments coming to us.
So just carry on tomorrow and?
Would you like to finish public safety and then start at recreation in the morning or would you like to just start with fire right in the morning?
What's the consensus?
Tomorrow with fire.
Tomorrow with fire?
Yeah.
Okay, I think, well.
We can stop here.
Yeah. Okay.
Especially if you think the dialogue's been good and.
Well, it is and I don't want to short Chief Light or Joe back there and, you know, and limit our questions and concerns, so.
Well, and tomorrow, we don't have to do all the.
Right, we can get right into the things. And we only have about 30 slides and what was planned for tomorrow, so that'll even it up.
And we've heard Henry do all kinds of presentations.
Yeah, we'll save him for last.
Thank you.
Definitely, if you could tomorrow, bring back your book on the slides because I don't have another copy of those, so if you forget it, you won't have it to look at.
Okay. Thank you for coming, everybody, and we'll continue this again tomorrow. 9 o'clock, same time, same station? Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned.